Welcome to the 7pm meeting of Wyndham City Council this Tuesday, the 25th of May 2021. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Coolan Nation as the traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Please stand for the opening prayer and welcome.
We pray for guidance in the council's decision making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham.
Good evening to all councillors, to all members in the gallery and staff in attendance this evening. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the internet. The recording will be archived and made available on council's website. Item two on the agenda is apologies and requests for leave. Madam Acting CEO, do we have any apologies or requests for leave this evening?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is declarations by councillors of disclosure of conflict of interest, conflicting personal interest in any item of the agenda. Councillors, do I have any conflicts of interest this evening? councillor Barrera?
Um, yes, Madam Mayor. Item 6.3.1 Wyndham City Community Grants and Subsidies Policy.
Thank you very much. Any other councillors? Thank you councillor Barrera and councillors. Item four is confirmation of the previous minutes of previous, confirmation of minutes of previous meeting, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 20th of April 2021 and Tuesday, the 27th of April 2021, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, seconda? Councillor Mafud? Councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item five on the agenda is deputations and presentations and there are nil. Item six is officers' reports, 6.1 petitions. Madam Acting CEO, I believe there are two petitions this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our councillors, the first petition was received on the 4th of May and it's outlined on page three of the agenda. The petition requests, uh, requests crossings with provision, speed hump and provision of a toilet at Little Green Park. Uh, council notes the petition and will prepare a report to respond to the petition at the next council meeting on the 29th of June 2021. The second petition, also received on the 4th of May, uh, requests a fortnightly street sweeping of Cruz Street Point Cook and again, a report will be prepared and responded to, um, at the next council meeting on the 29th of, uh, June.
Thank you, Madam Acting CEO. Item 6.1.3 on the agenda is response to petition O221 for Trugana P9 parking issues. The report is on pages nine to 11, the recommendations on pages nine. Councillors, do I have a mover?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment, um, to this motion.
Um, councillor, um, Ramesh, there is no motion on the table at the moment, so it's a bit hard to move an amendment. You're foreshadowing an amendment?
Yes, foreshadowing.
Should a motion be put on the table?
Yes, yes.
Okay, councillors, do I have a mover for a motion, please? Councillor, um, McIntyre, seconda? Councillor Mafud? Councillor Ramesh, you had foreshadowed an amendment. Would you like to read out your amendment, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to make changes to, um, or add three points, um, to add the words, um, below. It is recommended that the council officers investigate traffic and parking around the Trugana P9 College during morning, afternoon peak times to identify potential traffic and parking solutions, including the feasibility of a pick-up drop, drop-off zone within three months of today's date. The second one being-
So your amendment is you're adding the words within three months of today's date, being the 25th of May?
That's correct. That the council officers lies with the Trugana P9 College as part of the above mentioned investigation and that the council officers notify the lead petitioner of the investigation results accordingly. So just managing the communications back to the petitioner.
Thank you councillor Ramesh. Do I have a, uh, seconda for that amendment? Councillor Hill? Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on why we're putting up the amendment?
Um, it's, um, pretty straightforward, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other councillors we should speak on in the amendment? Councillor Shaw? We're speaking on the amendment? No. Councillors, I now put the mo-, uh, any other councillors we should speak? Otherwise I'll put the motion to a vote in regards to accepting the amendment. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. The motion has now become the substanti-, the amendment has now become the substantive motion, which is, um, the words within three months of today's date have been added to, uh, item or clause number one. So councillors, I now, um, open the floor for discussion. Councillors, do I have anyone wishing to speak on this item? Councillor Shaw?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I am, as I said, I am supporting, uh, the amendment and, uh, the substantive motion tonight, but quite frankly, uh, I'm tired that, uh, getting sick and tired that the fact that this council has to keep trying to fix issues around schools because schools aren't actually built with enough parking or appropriate pick-up and drop-off zones, um, as needed, uh, for our local community. This is a common issue, uh, not just around older schools, but certainly around some of our newer schools. And it's actually not just our job to fix this issue. It's actually the role of the state government to work with council to ensure that when they're building these schools and putting them together, that we have appropriate traffic management solutions in place, including, uh, these pick-up and drop-off zones within schools. As a mum, uh, to a young son, I say this every day, um, around the school that my son attends, there's four schools within about one and a half kilometres of each other and every morning and every evening, we have the same issues. New schools are just not built with enough parking and enough parking solutions to support our community. And I think it's actually time that this changed. So happy to support this recommendation, but getting very tired for the fact that it becomes up to us to actually fix this problem. I don't think it's our solely alone. And furthermore, um, in relation, I think to petitions more broadly, uh, 25 signatures, um, isn't really a lot. Um, and whilst I support, as I have said, this recommendation, these are issues that residents really should be working with their ward councillors about. And if ward councillors are doing their jobs properly, these things would come to our attention and we would actually look to rectify them. And I think we're pretty good at doing that. We've got history about doing that in the past. We're seeing a number of these petitions come on with very low numbers. I think we need to look at the number of signatures that are required for this to come into the chamber for us to be making decisions on and receiving a report. This takes up councillor officer time, time taken away from very other sort of, uh, priorities that we have going at this council. So I'd like us to be looking at reviewing that. I'll be bringing that forward for a council briefing for us to be discussing. I won't be making an amendment to this now, but ultimately in the end, when you look at 39 signatures, 22 signatures, please, we should be working with your ward councillors to raise these issues and to bring them forward. That would be the correct way to do this kind of thing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor McIntyre, you were the mover of the original motion. I should have gone to you in the first instance. Um, so I'll, we'll ask you if you were interested in speaking on this item as a mover and then I'll open up the floor again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think councillor Shaw did, uh, a good job there on summarising some of the key issues we have around schools. So there's no need for me to, um, repeat other than the fact that safety around schools is of, you know, is of great importance and is an issue in all far too many schools. In our older schools, some of the issues would not have necessarily been anticipated because the, um, number of pupils would, um, not necessarily have been, um, yeah, basically anticipated as having that number. However, in our new schools, there really is no excuse why this planning isn't put in place in advance. Um, and so I do support the motion and I do support the amendment, um, proposed by councillor Ramesh. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. Councillor Mafud, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try not to repeat some of the things councillor Shaw said, but I too agree with, with, with her points there. And I think there's two, two things I'd like to touch on is one firstly, while we welcome petitions at any time, I think sometimes some members of the community could probably go through, really petitions should be after, should be used after you've exhausted all other options. And I myself, as a parent, as a president of the school council, my children's school, have worked with council officers outside of council to address similar issues. I mean, this is an issue that with all schools right across Wyndham, council officers are aware of this. And it's not just legislative services officers. That's normally the last step. I know council, as we know, council doesn't just want to strap, you know, fines on the parents for doing the wrong thing. There's normally other things that council officers and particular offices and particular different departments will happily work with parents and schools around this issue, as I know I've done that myself. A number of years ago, many, many years ago, I think it was 2011 or 2012, I put through a notice motion through this chamber to address this exact issue. And the active schools programme was initiated just after that. So this is again, where any concerned parents can get onto council staff, just one thing they can do, there's many other, um, many other things they can do. One thing they can do is sign this, sign the school up to the active travel programme. And that looks at a holistic approach around traffic management issues around schools. It's not just about finding parents. It's not about just, you know, building more car parks, but drop-off zones and car parks, of course, they do help, especially the drop-off zones and getting that flow of traffic. But sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, just walking, walking a block or, you know, creating a walking groups with the school. So there's other ways we can go about this. And I think anyone in the public that wishes to actively try and change these, these, these habits, these of parents and children around the school should try to look, you know, look to the active travel programme to try and address these, these issues. Another point of that motion that I put, um, through this chamber many, many years ago was also writing to the relevant ministers, the education ministers and ministers for planning, to try and ask them to build that into, build traffic, build, um, build this into the schools as, as they're getting built. When the permit is given to a school, to a private school or a Catholic school, they have to provide parking, but state schools don't have to go by the same requirements. So I think maybe the state government needs to look at that in the future, needs to look at schools and how they could be better, how the design of the schools can be, how they can be built. So these, we don't constantly have these problems. This is not a problem that's going to go away.
Thank you councillor Mafud. Any other councillors which should speak? Concerned councillor Marcus?
Thank you. Um, I think councillor Shaw summed it up very, um, well, because she does have, she's attending the school that I took my grandchildren to. What the government have to do and work, when we're working with our PSPs, they have to make sure that suitable land is set aside for car parking. I was on the school board, I've been on many school boards in this city and there is no consultation with parents on, with the school councils. Um, I remember I was out at Manor Lakes for eight years. Not once did the parents come in and talk with the, the college council. So this is what needs to happen, but the governments need to make sure that we have wider roads around our schools. And this is what's causing many of the problems. The streets in our new PSPs are far too narrow, causing too many problems. Yes, we've got active travel plan. Sorry, this is a sprawling city and people want cars. Uh, and I think we've got to get used to the fact, if we're going to continue to sprawl out and, and head towards Melton and they're wanting to put 18 houses per hectare, they've got, that's what they've got to look at. They've got to look at how they're going to make sure that it is better for the, and parents will not allow their children to work because they're too frightened, to let their kids out on the road to go to school by themselves. So this is, is, we need to look at this in many ways. And, uh, I, I, I just see what's happening because I live in a high profile area and we've got to do something fairly quickly to, to solve these problems.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Hill?
Um, thank you so much. Um, I'd like to thank the residents who, uh, wrote the petitions. So, um, I understand it is a state issue, but I think, uh, council, state and parents and schools, we all should work together to resolve issues like this. It's not just Trugana P9 parking issues. There are many other traffic issues around in Wyndham, especially around some of the overcrowded schools. So I think this is an important, uh, issue of us all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hill. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak to this motion? I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 6.3.2, sorry, 6.2 strategic reports, there are nil. 6.3 policy and advocacy, 6.3.1, I believe councillor Barrera has a conflict. Item 6.3.1 is the Wyndham City Community Grants and Subsidy Policy. The report's on pages two to 18 with the recommendation on page 12, sorry, 12 to 18, recommendations on page 12. The attachments are on page 19 to 26 of the, um, agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Ramesh, do I have a seconda? Councillor Mafud? Councillor Gilligan?
I'm just flagging that I'm putting an amendment to this item.
Would you like to, um, do you have a seconda? Uh, sorry, do you want to, do you want to read out your amendment?
Great, thank you. Uh, the amendment is essentially to add on, uh, to create point three, that the policy be amended to require that a list of successful applicants from each medium grants round be provided to councils immediately after final approval of each round by the director of city life.
Thank you. Do you have a second, uh, for that, um, motion councillor Hill? Councillor, um, Gilligan, would you like to speak to why you're putting up the amendment?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Essentially, this is to enable councillors to have greater awareness about the events that may be occurring within their ward that we funded. Um, and this ensures that this notification, um, is provided in a timely way, uh, so that councillors are kept up to date, uh, but also have the arms length, um, uh, arms length component built in, um, so that remains. Uh, and, um, finally allows for a timely decision to be made on each grants round, um, which is another benefit, uh, in terms of the arms length, um, proposal that's built into this policy.
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on the amendment? Councillor Zakowski?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I look, I've, I'm aware of this amendment. Um, I'm, I'm aware of the position councillor Gilligan has taken. Um, I have grave concerns. I'll be voting against this amendment. Um, the, the need for us to know this information, it hasn't really been made apparent. So I know that, uh, there was a, a point raised in, in previous discussions that, um, having access to the info, this information would, would save us the embarrassment of not knowing that events, some of the events that we attend, um, uh, are funded by, by council. And when you attend, yes, it's certainly embarrassing. That information is actually provided to us, um, when we're given, um, information about the event. So we're given a full briefing document about that event. So when we attend these events, we should, we ought to know if we read those documents, um, know whether or not, or it was or wasn't funded by council. Um, what this essentially does is, is give each individual councillor, um, an opportunity to, um, potentially take credit, uh, for the grant process. Um, it may, uh, result in some councillors making a decision to, uh, attend events, um, that they haven't been invited to, um, because that's, that's possibly the only way they've been, they're made aware of the event occurring. Um, I, I just don't think that's an appropriate way, um, for us as elected representatives, um, to utilise this information. And there's definitely a risk, um, that that may occur. And I don't think people who are applying for these funds, um, who, who wish to just engage in their community events, um, and don't want the presence of, of councillors there, um, should have that imposed upon them. Um, so I hope councillors here present, um, uh, take note of that risk when they're making the decision today, whether to support or not support that amendment. Um, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Zakowski. Any other councillors which should speak in regards to the amendment? Councillor Shaw and then? Are you speaking in regards to the amendment? Councillor Marcus?
Um, having been on council for 15 years and seen the wonderful work that this council have done in regards to all of our grants, we, we did have a, and it's in here endorsed the establishment of an annual grants panel, but I believe what councillor Gilligan is putting forward is valuable information. I think at times we do not get the information that we need. So, um, I would be very keen to make sure that this does occur. We are giving away huge amounts of money, which I will be speaking on later in the agenda, but I believe that this information and what councillor, uh, Gilligan has put forward, councillors, as long, as a long time councillor on this council, I believe we need this information. We need, it's not about going and saying, hey, look at me, look at me. It is about knowing where our rate, it's rate payers money. We need to let our rate payers know where the money is going. So therefore, we are the custodians of all the rates that come into this council. So therefore, I believe what councillor Gilligan is putting forward tonight is very important. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the motion for the amendment to the vote. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. The, um, the motion has now become, uh, the substantive and councillor Gilligan, I believe you were the mover of the original-
I did call a division on the, um, vote.
Oh, did you? Sorry. Can I get, um, a show of hands in regards to that? Are there, all those in favour? Councillor Mafud, councillor McIntyre, councillor Gilligan, councillor Hill, councillor Hegerdich, councillor Shaw, councillor Marcus, all those against the amendment, councillor Ramesh, councillor Zakowski and councillor Maynard. Thank you. Councillor, uh, Ramesh, you were the original mover of the motion. Uh, would you like to speak? Uh, would you like to speak on the motion?
Um, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillors, I now open up to any other councillors that wish to speak on the, uh, the motion, including the amendment. Councillor Shaw?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's good to see this policy come back. I think very, uh, well, strengthened compared to what it was last term. And certainly there are a few councillors around this table that worked hard, um, to ensure that this, uh, policy and the way we did grants were strengthened, uh, on behalf of, uh, this council to ensure there is appropriate governance and transparency in the way that we, um, use rate payers money, but also for our, um, community as well to ensure it was going to be a much simpler and clearer process into how they can actually apply for a grant. And it's great to see small, medium, large. I think that sort of makes it very clear compared to how it used to be, a number of different categories. Um, I, uh, note that, um, the large grant annual rounds will continue to go to council meetings for endorsement. Um, and I support the amendment around the medium grants. There's still a lot of money, as councillor Marcus said, I think she made some good points there. You know, we're talking about up to $15,000 of rate payers money. And for us to have, um, oversight, uh, and transparency on that, to see what the recommendations are, I think actually is really important. Um, from my point of view, it's not about attending events and who might attend events and who doesn't attend events. It's actually ensuring from a governance and transparency point of view, uh, that is, uh, it is, uh, correct and we are happy with how that process is going, especially when we're talking about hundreds of thousands, sometimes millions of dollars of rate payers money. So I'd actually like to congratulate the council officers, um, who have done a lot of work in this space. Um, I think we've known now more than ever, uh, grants, uh, is something our community values very much. Uh, we certainly saw that through COVID with our business grants and what we did in that space. And I'm sure they'll be very appreciative of the work that we've done here in making it a much more simple process for them to apply. And I look forward to this commencing and for us to getting, um, our reports on what grants, uh, we will be giving to our community to continue the great work and they, and the great work they do for our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which should speak on this motion? Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Probably two points I wish to make. The first relates to the evaluation panel, which was something that was hard fought, uh, and was important to secure as part of the ongoing monitoring and overviewing of the decisions that we make. And of course, as councillor Shaw has rightly pointed out, um, the ultimate decision in relation to large grants still becomes a matter for this council. And I think it's worth noting that, that councillors actually are the final decision-making when it, decision-makers when it comes to grants. And I most certainly will highlight the problem tonight, what happens when we solely give this opportunity to officers, particularly on a grant that I think has serious, uh, I have most serious concerns about in an upcoming item, which falls to the next point that I intend to make where, you know, the, the point around risk, uh, and, uh, councillors actually knowing about grants, the opposite is so true. Uh, we have a grant here tonight, uh, that is going to a former councillor or proposed to go to a former councillor's business, um, that is recommended by council officers. Uh, and in my opinion, uh, had that been before an evaluation panel or indeed was able to be picked up, uh, by councillors with direct involvement, um, not in terms of, uh, ultimate decision-makers, uh, but were included along the way. Uh, that is the very risk and the very reason why having more information is better than having less. Uh, and I look forward to speak to that. And that equally applies in the context of this item this evening. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak to this item? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wyndham City Council has a long history of funding community-led projects and initiatives through the Community Grants Programme. For a growing community like ours, access to resources and funds for community groups and organisations to develop and implement their own projects is essential. What sometimes remains out of sight is the vast number of community groups and community leaders who volunteer their time to lead activities that they're passionate about. Activities that help to connect individuals and neighbourhoods and build a safer, healthier and more inclusive community. Small grants, up to 500 for an individual and up to 2,000 for an incorporated association, allow events like a barbecue in a park and enable communities to meet their neighbours and strengthen that community bond. I've always been amazed at what can be achieved by putting resources into the hands of the people who are already leading change. It's an exciting moment to be part of putting in place a new grants programme and I'm even more excited to see what types of grants and projects emerge as a result of these new funding streams. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. Councillor Hill, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to congratulate also, um, to our officers for their hard work on, in this space. And, uh, the best investment is actually investing into our community members. Community members are assets. I'm especially thrilled, um, when I spoke to the, um, yeah, thrilled, um, when I spoke to the officers and also community members, um, yeah, when they realise this is, um, um, available online. And especially the small grants, up, um, upgraded from 1,000 to 2,000. And it is used, um, we're just very excited about this, uh, that the project and the investment into community members can be used to build social connections, strengthen community, community cohesion, encourage inclusions. I'm just so looking forward to see, um, many more, um, um, projects and activities and community groups, um- the project that they will be proposing to apply for the grant that we put forward, especially large grants as well. A lot of big festivals, it's important to support these festivals. They, they, they're just important festivals and events run by our community, and they're all mostly volunteers, and they absolutely complement the work that council is doing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Thank you. Can we please call councillor Barrera back into the room? Thank you, councillor Barrera. 6.4 is strategic in town planning. 6.4.1 is the Planning Scheme Amendment, C236, heritage overlay for Carter Avenue and Manor Estate in Warrabee. The report is on pages 27 to 39 with the recommendation on page 28. The attachments are on pages 40 to 78. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Gilligan, seconda? Councillor Mufford? Councillor Gilligan as the mover, would you like to speak on this item?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. This is a great step forward for protecting local significance in terms of heritage in the suburb of Warrabee, and in particular, of course, the Carter Houses, as it's termed by residents in our community, and ensuring that the idea of place that has meant so much, particularly in what we would more, more informally call the old established Warrabee, protecting and preserving significant heritage sites there, and appreciation of the heritage and the development that exists in terms of that section of Warrabee and that historic continuity that's so important. And I think this is part of an ongoing conversation that we need to continue to have in terms of planning scheme amendments. And I know there's been conversations around multi-unit development and the preservation of, and indeed the creation of neighbourhood residential zones and the sort of schedules that are required in terms of the overall planning scheme. This is another step forward in ensuring that this work we get on with, protecting and preserving these sites as soon as possible. It is important too, in the broader context of the neighbourhood character strategy, that the implementation plan actually has a timeline attached to it. It doesn't, and this has been quite a long time overdue. And I think that our continuation and the push that will be on in terms of the City Design and Livability Directorate and doing everything we can over the next several years to protect and preserve heritage across our city, but also to start to build that livable city. I know our director continues to talk about that vision as part of the work we're doing in this council. It's exciting stuff. It's stuff we've got to continue to invest in, and this is a great step forward for not just Warrabee, but indeed the investment that we are intending to make in heritage overlays across the city and protecting heritage across our city. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the history and heritage fits under my portfolio, so I'm really pleased to see this. I love the history of this city, and we've lost a lot of very historic places in the past. So it's great to see that this has come forward and it's well documented. But there is, I would like to thank Mr Lance Pritchard for his input for what he does for the history. If Mr Lance Pritchard was not here, we would be losing a lot more history. But there's just a little bit of interesting thing in attachment number four on page 65, we've listed the South Bay Stone and the North Bay Stone and the Chaffey Pump, but there is no, there is no, there's nothing in here to say that these will be looked after. And what Mr Lance Pritchard is asking, if these can be fenced off so that when the developers come through, that they're just not bulldozed into the ground. So we are waiting for a reply for that to come back to us, because they, the north, I don't know whether the councillors understand what the north and south bay stones were, but that was when they surveyed this country, and that's something that we should be preserving. But great to see that the Carter Houses are being preserved, as if you drive round there, they are beautifully built little homes. And I think as councillor Gilligan said, you know, when they're pulling these homes down and what we're replacing them with is very poor quality. Someone said to me the other day, Heather, all the new buildings being built today will be bulldozed down into the ground and will still be standing with all of those beautifully built homes years ago. So well done to the, I don't know whether context was the people doing this, but well done to those that have been listed there. And in the other, in the amendment, there's many down in Warrabee South that have also been mentioned, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this is one step, I believe, in a process of protecting heritage buildings and other facilities within Windham. Certainly it is extremely important that we do so and we ensure that they remain for the ability to be viewed by residents now and in the future. And as councillor Marcus alluded to with the South Bay Stone, which has now been basically fenced off so that there is no public access to it, council did at one point attempt to purchase land to allow access to that South Bay Stone, but was unable to do so. So I commend all involved in this report and I intend to support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak on this item? I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 6.5, Other Reports, 6.5.1, Financial Management Report, Quarter Three, 2021. The report is on pages 79 to 83, recommendations on page 78, with the attachments on page 84 to 100. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Barrera, do I have a seconda? Councillor Ramesh? Councillor Barrera is the mover, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other councillors which should speak? Councillor McIntyre, then councillor Gilligan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say that, given the new COVID restrictions, hopefully that will contain the current spread, it reminds us very much when we look at the results in this report that we're not out of the woods yet. Despite the fact that 87% of the first three rate installments have been paid, which was greater than anticipated, it's important to state again that if someone is facing financial hardship, that they contact us to see whether a payment plan can be entered into and whether they qualify for assistance under the Windham City Financial Hardship Policy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Gilligan?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I thought it was important to highlight, 2,151 households were in receipt of the Jobkeeper rebate that was provided as part of the decision made in the last term, which demonstrates the ongoing support that we've provided in terms of the COVID rates relief and something that was mentioned in the Ombudsman's Report in terms of how councils have handled rates relief for vulnerable and/or families, frankly, that were just doing it tough during that period. And so I just thought that was important to reiterate as part of this report. I think broadly speaking though, we are in for a rough ride over the next several years, whether it be the population component, housing demand, and the extent to which we will be relying on rates increases over time, and more broadly, the impact that's going to have on our bottom line revenue. And the challenge ahead for us around managing and ultimately considering capping employee costs as part of the future ongoing administration of this council. We have tough choices, choices that were not required necessarily in the last term that will need to be made in this one, in order to strike the right balance between managing assets, having the right workforce, but also managing costs and having an honest conversation with our community about the trade-off that that will involve where we're simply not going to be able to get everything that we want and need, particularly in a suburb versus suburb sense, which I suspect will inevitably become a problem closer, particularly over the 24, 25 and 25, 26 period. So they are the points I wanted to make on this item. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors? Councillor Shaw?
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with councillor Gilligan, and we've had these conversations as a council that we are in for a tough ride. It is good to see that our budget deficit after depreciation, due to a favourable operating forecast and result of budget of 21.24.1 million, it is still our deficit, operating deficit after depreciation is still 28.3 million. Our current budget is out for consultation, I think it's due to close very shortly, and people that do look at that budget will see that we are forecasting a $42 million deficit for next financial year. So this is a problem that is only going to get bigger, unfortunately. So I do endorse some of the comments that councillor Gilligan has made tonight, and I think what is really important and what I am looking forward is doing our long-term financial plan, a 10-year long-term financial plan that all councils have to do, and I'm looking forward to doing that, so we can start to understand these issues in some more detail. But I agree that we are going to start having some trade-offs and some tougher conversations with communities. I agree, it will become an issue probably in later budgets around suburbs and what's in and what isn't, which will be further exacerbated by the changes that the current state government have made in relation to single-member wards. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillor Marcus?
Thank you very much. Well, I concur with what councillor Gilligan and councillor Shaw have said. I think the way this budget has been laid out, it's very good. We certainly have, over the years, you know, been putting in a lot of good infrastructure. But I'm really concerned because we are in consultation all the time with the Victorian Chamber of Commerce. They're extremely worried about the businesses. They feel the businesses are in for a very tough time, so, and with the new estate taxes put on all the people with investment properties, they're fearful of the amount of extra taxes they're going to pay, which will cause some of the businesses to have to close down. So I think these, some of the things that we really will have to look at, that the council officers will have to look at, if we, as I said, the businesses are the drivers of our community, if we start losing these businesses, therefore there's no jobs for anyone. So I think, you know, we could end up with the $40 million that councillor Shaw just said. If this goes higher and higher and higher, we cannot allow this to do so. So not quite sure, we do need a 10-year financial budget, but the way the economy is going at the moment, there's the fear now if we come into a second lockdown, and I hope to God, please don't let this happen, but if it does happen, we really will be suffering. And I just know from the business side of this that, you know, everybody in the business world is really, really concerned about what is happening with all the new state taxes that have just been imposed upon them. You know, some people are going to be up for $50,000 in land tax. So how do they, how do they put that into their, into their budget to make money to employ staff? Because the first thing that has to go is staff. So well done to the council officers for producing this, but please, we need a lot more consultation on the state of the economy going forward.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, as the, as the report indicates, in the third quarter review, there is an underlying, underlying operating position that reflects a favourable result of $24.5 million. I think there needs to be, well, as we're required to now, and we should be, providing a long-term financial plan, most certainly, and we do, and we most certainly do as a council, try and squeeze the best out of every rate dollar for the residents. I think it's also important to note, Madam Mayor, that certainly as this council grows over the next 30 years, we are certainly going to have an increase, a huge increase in our asset base. I think our asset base at the moment is about $4 billion. And every year, we're supposedly gifted, which I think is an extraordinary word, $200 million in assets from developers each year, which are roads, curbs, channel, parks, et cetera. And as that list grows, so in five years, you're looking at, you know, another billion dollars, 250 to 200 million, well, 200, 250 million a year. It then becomes paramount that this council obviously has to look at the long-term renewal of these, these assets. I think it's unfortunate that the current accounting practices require this council to show those assets as cash, when in fact they're not. They're roads, they're curbs, they're parks, they're those sorts of things. So I certainly think that that needs to be reviewed. I also have the view that, you know, the rate capping position that this council is in, or has been put in, as other councils have, you know, what should also be happening is that if we're going to have continued growth, then the infrastructure that's provided to this council or this community should be provided for and not left to residents to foot the bill for the whole lot. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I now put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 6.5.2, Naming of New Community Centre in Tarni, Riverdale PSP. The report's on pages 101 to 105, the recommendation's on page 101. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Marcus? Seconda? Councillor Ramesh? Councillor Marcus, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, I think it's quite exciting actually, that we've gone through the process. There was a vote taken by the community. They endorsed the name Dianella Community Centre, so I think the right process was done, so therefore I think that we vote on this. Just to let you all know, I was watching Gardening Australia the other night, and guess what popped up? The plant. And how much the Indigenous people love this plant and they revere in it. So I'm very proud to think that this is what we're going to call the new community centre. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Look, I think this is a missed opportunity. Clearly put my point of view about naming it after a prominent resident and leader of our community, and I think that that ultimately is what it is. But what I am most interested in though is the decision not to actually name it Riverdale Community Centre, and the ultimate reason that has been put is that the development itself was called Riverdale and therefore wasn't appropriate in terms of the state regulations to name it after a developer or a developer. And I accept to a degree that that is an argument that can be put, but I am equally concerned ultimately that the overall precinct structure plan is also called Riverdale. And I think the reason I say this is a missed opportunity is it should have been named after the locality in which it has been built. It should be named Riverdale Community Centre if it's not going to be named after a prominent member of our community. And whilst I have this view and I intend to oppose the ultimate decision of Dianella, it is what it is in that context, but I do think there needs to be a review of our naming policy to ensure that primary consideration is given to the local area in which it is built. I don't know anybody that's going to go around saying it's Dianella, they're going to call it the Riverdale Community Centre because that is where they live and that is what their area is called. And the final point I would make is that it's noted in the report, and it received criticism frankly, but it was noticed, noted in the report that it's not only native to Windham, but it is to many other areas. That sense of place doesn't exist with this site, because this particular plant is everywhere. But Riverdale is in Tarni, where this building is located, and I think we had a missed opportunity in not calling it Riverdale because of bureaucratic red tape, because we didn't have the policy parameters in place to ultimately be more flexible in this process, and that is... And that is why we'll continue to call for this process to be continued to review so that the next half a dozen communities that have to go through this process are not bound to have to have two names imposed on them in a so-called community consultation, that there is a broader consideration of what those names would involve. Thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors wish to speak on this item? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is that there are actually two additional centres to be opened in the area of Riverdale as well, which is why it would not be seen as appropriate for this community centre to be called Riverdale. Because if it was, then you'd say which part of Riverdale and it would lead to confusion. So I just wanted to say that that was my understanding to start with. I believe that the community has spoken loud and clear on this issue. I believe we need to move forward. The centre's about to open and any delay now regarding name isn't particularly constructive. I'd like to see lessons learnt for next time, as I think we have agreed around the room. And there are a number of additional community centres going to be opened in our term. So I would like the review of that naming process and a lesson learned for the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I agree with councillor Gilligan and councillor McIntyre. We do need to learn from this. However, at the end of the day, Dianella Community Centre received more than seventy-five per cent of the vote. I think it is what it is and we're going to have to go with that. That's what the community's voted for. But I do, I do very strongly agree that this is an opportunity to review how we name centres in the future.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Councillor Shaw?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. We've had many discussions in this chamber around the number of people that respond to different surveys and engagement pieces and whatnot, and two hundred and eighty isn't that high for me, to be honest. I agree with it, the centre's about to open, we need to give it a name. I won't be supporting it tonight for some of the reasons that councillor Gilligan has already highlighted and the fact that I actually wanted another name for this centre that we couldn't actually get across the line unfortunately, which I think is highly disappointing and I agree is a missed opportunity. I don't think we need a summary of lessons learnt at all. I think the policy needs a review. I think we need to be thinking about what sort of legacies and history, considering we just talked about Carter Avenue and the precincts and the homes, you know, that the history we want to leave for people in this city actually also is reflected in the sorts of names that we give buildings. And, you know, to have that opportunity missed, because actually the majority of councillors didn't vote for it, otherwise we might have actually got it across the line, is why that we're now stuck with Dianella. So yes, there was a hundred and fifty-seven people that voted for that, but if you think we have two hundred and eighty thousand plus residents in this city and a hundred and fifty-seven of them voted for Dianella, I wouldn't say that's a majority view in this point. But anyway, it is what it is. Unfortunately, this is the name that we'll be going with. I won't be, as I said, I won't be supporting it tonight, but I do think the policy needs a review. And I think as a council though, considering the item, as I said, we just recently voted on in relation to history and leaving legacies, is we are able to make these decisions ourselves. We don't always need a policy. I think it's about thinking about what we think the right thing is to do for this community, for our history and for the kind of legacy that we'd like to leave. So I'll just leave it at that. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillor Zakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been said many times that the future is decided by those who show up. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the residents that took part in this process. You showed up, you voted, and you've got the outcome that you sought. If residents of this community don't believe the best decisions are being made, show up, vote, have your say, and we may get different outcomes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Councillor Hill, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the sentiment around the room. The two names being proposed, the community Chaffee Channel Community Centre and Dianella Community Centre, doesn't have a very fair competition because one is four words, one is three words. So I'm just, yeah, a bit disappointed. The Warribee Rivers Association and the Warribee District Historical Society, their preference, their comment, the feedback didn't get, take into consideration, because they also mentioned they would like to have the word Chaffee Community Centre. I personally would like to know how many people would actually want to vote for Chaffee Community Centre compared to Dianella Community Centre. It is an opportunity that missed. Yeah, it's something that we learned. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Any other councillors wish to speak on this item? I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against?
You'll get, you'll get a chance because I'm going to call for a division. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Thank you, councillor Shaw. All those in, all those in favour? Councillor Mofford, councillor McIntyre, councillor Ramesh, councillor Hegeditich, councillor Marcus, councillor Zakowski, councillor Maynard and councillor Barrera. All those against? Councillor Gilligan, councillor Hill and councillor Shaw. Thank you. Item six point five point three, Win Local Manufacturing and Primary Producer Development and Expansion Fund. The report is on pages one oh six to one hundred and sixteen, the recommendation's on page one hundred and seven. Councillors, do I have a mover?
Yes.
Councillor Shaw, seconda, councillor Maynard. Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
I would, thank you, Madam Mayor. To the best of my knowledge, no other local government authority in Australia has offered a similar funding programme to this industry sector targeted fund, part of council's Win Local Economic Support package. Manufacturing and primary production accounts for eleven point one per cent of Wyndham's employment base and a very substantial twenty-four point four per cent of the city's economic output. This makes Wyndham one of the most significant contributors to these sectors in the state and it's these sectors that provide some of the highest levels of positive economic onflows in Wyndham's economy, including job creation and the payment of salaries and wages. While both the state and federal government have flagged target sector funding for manufacturing, very few of their target sectors are represented in Wyndham and is therefore critically important that we as a council fill the void and support our existing manufacturing base. In a COVID economy, much has been discussed in regards to Australia stepping up to the plate and supporting local manufacturing and building economic resilience through, through far less reliance on imported goods. I applaud council's response. Initiated as a competitive fund with a robust application process, this innovative local government initiative is supporting research and development, product diversification and exploration of new international markets beyond China. As an aside, the fund also provides opportunity for council to support and promote some world-class local companies. As part of the fund's governance, councillors were not involved in the application and assessment process. So I'm very much looking forward to meeting with our recipients and learning more about their funded projects, their ongoing aspirations, opportunities and challenges post-council's formal endorsement of this report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Any other councillors wish to speak on this item? Now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item six point five point four, Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation Fund. The report is on pages one hundred and seventeen to one hundred and twenty-six with the recommendation on one hundred and seventeen. Councillors, do I have a mover?
So I intend to put an alternate resolution.
You're foreshadowing an alternate?
Oh, I am putting it.
Are you putting it now? Thank you, councillor Gilligan.
So it is as follows. One, that council notes the recipients and funding allocated to Wyndham businesses under the Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation Fund. Two, endorses the distribution of two hundred thousand under the fund. Three, rejects the panel recommendation to award two thousand dollars in relation to the Wyndham Review business application. And four, endorses all other recommendations of the assessment panel in the dispersal of funds to successful applicants under the fund.
Before I ask for anything else, can I just confirm that you're endorsing the distribution of two hundred and two thousand dollars or two hundred thousand?
So, Madam Mayor, I'm rejecting two thousand, which would mean that only two hundred would be distributed.
Thank you, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Do you have a second for the alternate? Councillor Shaw? Councillor Gilligan, would you like, as the mover of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, can I call a point of order? We haven't spoke, we haven't, councillor Gilligan's foreshadowed an alternate, but the additional substantive motion hasn't failed.
I've put it as an alternative.
The substantive motion was never put, so this has become the substantive motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as indicated, I have proposed that we take an alternate position to the one recommended in this report, because I have significant concerns around how we ultimately reached a decision, that is, the assessment panel in relation to a grant that was provided. Specifically, I refer to a recommendation to provide-
Councillor Gilligan, sorry to interrupt you. Can you repeat point number three again? Because the minute takers haven't gotten it down and councillors aren't aware of it. So are you able to just repeat that point?
Madam Mayor, I wish to foreshadow an alternative motion should this motion fail.
Thank you. We'll just get that up on the screen so everyone's aware of what it is. Sorry, councillor Gilligan. I don't have one in front of me.
There's also a, there's also a copy on everyone's desk.
Again, I haven't got one on my desk either.
Oh, they haven't printed it. Oh. Alice, all right, we're ready to go.
You may begin again, sorry, and I'll give you back your five minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As indicated, I am presenting an alternate resolution for this evening in relation to the awarding of grants under this item, with a view to not award a specific grant of two thousand dollars that has been recommended by the assessment panel. I'm specifically referring to a grant of two thousand dollars to Wyndham Review, also associated with Melbourne Production Propriety Limited, which is a business owned and operated by former councillor Tony Hooper. I note that this grant programme was voted on by the former councillor when he was in office in the previous term, and he's now a potential recipient of the grant if councillors vote to approve it this evening. More broadly, I do not support in principle funding a business with known political activities which owns and operates a media outlet with far-right wing propaganda. Specifically, I refer to councillor Hooper's media outlet Tones Review, which is also owned by Melbourne Production Propriety Limited, which contains a series of propaganda rants that are racist and would be condemned by an overwhelming majority of our community. In one video on the website, he uses a photo of our local Member of Parliament, Tim Pelles, broadcast onto a Chinese flag with the headline, "Tim Pelles, Chuck Servative for China". He goes on to ask viewers, and I quote, "So is Tim being a chuck over China? Would love to know what you think?" Unquote. According to dictionary dot com, the world's online dictionary, a chuck is a derogatory slang term for a weak, effeminate or inadequate man. Chuck has also been blended with conservatives to produce Chuck Servative, often shortened back to chuck. Both chuck and Chuck Servative are especially used online by white nationalists to insult US Republican politicians they judge as insufficiently conservative. Referring to our treasurer, our local member, by a term used by white nationalists is precisely why this council cannot possibly fund a grant to a business that broadcasts this sort of right-
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
If you thought that isn't enough-
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. There's been a point of order.
I believe the statement that provided by councillor Gilligan is likely to mislead or is actually, the some facts are incorrect.
Which bit specifically, councillor Hill?
By having his own opinion over another person.
Thank you, councillor Hill. I'm not going to uphold that point of order, so councillor-
He's calling a previous councillor as racist and I have, I know the councillor myself-
Sorry, councillor Hill, he hasn't called anyone a racist.
We'll get on to the how to vote card that he had for you in a second, but I just want to talk about specifically here the importance of this item. So I do think it's important that you rule on that, that is totally-
I did rule on that.
So are you asking the councillor to retract the comment?
No, I asked, I said I didn't uphold her at point of order and I've allowed you to continue, councillor Gilligan.
Enough for me. If you thought that wasn't appalling enough, let's turn to some other material broadcast. He strongly endorsed two sitting councillors in this room and published a ranking based on his personal point of view to influence voters at the twenty-twenty Wyndham City Council election. Councillor Hill was obviously number one on that ticket, as was councillor McIntyre number two, and councillor Ramesh was third on that material.
Points of order, Madam Mayor.
Not finished, but sure.
Councillor McIntyre?
My understanding is that I can bring point of order at this point.
Yeah, councillor McIntyre?
Yeah, so point of order is that the votes or the ordering was in relation to a call-in, which was-
What councillor, thank you councillor Shaw, councillor McIntyre, point of order off the shape.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. I think the statements are likely to mislead or deceive.
Which statement is likely to-
The statement that, that the councillor at the time, councillor Tony Hooper, created a how to vote to card on his own personal recommendation. Was that not what you said, councillor?
Yeah, I did. I've got a screenshot of it and I'm happy to quote, Madam Mayor, from Tones Review on the fourteenth of October twenty-twenty. It's important, it's important to rule on this, it's important to give you the evidence, I think.
Councillor McIntyre, your point has been noted. I'll uphold your comments. Councillor Gilligan, you can continue.
Madam Mayor, if you're upholding it, then you agree with it and it's false in terms of what she said.
You did say the, it was an endorsed-
But you've, you've agreed with her that somehow that was misleading when it simply wasn't. It's fact. I can read it to you. On the fourteenth of October, it says, "Hi all, if you are interested in the show's rankings, here they are. Number one-"
Madam Mayor, the point was, I believe councillor Gilligan, and you can correct me if I'm wrong councillor Gilligan, you said Tony Hooper's personal recommendation.
Well, it is his company, it's his page, it is him.
That's not what you're now saying. What you're now saying is the Tones Review-
As I said, can we move on? We can move on. I'm upholding councillor McIntyre's point of order, councillor Gilligan, however, I'd like you to, you're welcome to continue.
I just note that councillor, Tony Hooper's face is on the item, I assume that's coming from him.
Points of order, Madam Mayor. Can councillor Gilligan not continue with something that you've just upheld? Thank you.
So clearly this point alone shows that political activities of this company would rule it out of ratepayer handouts, and that is precisely why I would encourage us not to support this. Other materials from Tones Review include, and I quote, "Bunk ballots sent out en masse proves Democrats have corrupted the election, yet media blames Trump." Are we seriously going to be part of a business that is running these sorts of conspiracy theories? Ratepayer handouts going to Melbourne Production Propriety Limited, of which is connected to Tones Review and Wyndham Review. That is why we simply should have access to this information earlier, as one councillor remarked before. This is a great risk, one that I am concerned about. Finally, on the Wyndham Review page, for those that doubt and say, well, there's a distinction between Tones Review and Wyndham Review, only three days ago, a video was uploaded condemning the sexual orientation of some members of the US military by the same right-wing commentator that is on both the Wyndham Review and the Tones Review page. How can we have confidence that the ratepayer grant will not be used to fund this sort of shocking material in future publications and divide our community? It is simply concerning that we would fund this application. And the application talks to multilingual material being distributed and indeed relates to Wyndham Review as a, as a news outlet and indeed associated with Tones Review. And if we thought that wasn't bad enough, I want to refer to another video produced by former councillor Hooper, who attacked sitting councillors in this room. In a forty-plus minute rant, he goes on to single out councillor Marcus, after she raised concerns that this council might go into administration due to a decision to overturn a council recommendation and install councillor Ramesh as the MAV delegate. He said, and I quote, "Anyone who hears that should be losing respect for anyone who makes these sorts of comments." Unquote. This is totally unacceptable. I don't care who you are, but we should not be funding rate, we should not be handing ratepayer handouts to businesses that are going on and attacking public representatives here in this chamber. It is shocking stuff that I have discussed here tonight, and that is precisely why- It is shocking stuff that I have discussed here tonight, and that is precisely why I encourage councillors to support my amendment, not provide ratepayer handout to this particular business, for the very concerns that I outlined.
Can you please wrap it up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this motion? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure whether legislation has changed, but I was told back when CEO Ian Robbins was here that if councillors resigned from council, they could not take part in anything like this or talk on the council for two years. So I'd like the council officers to check to see if this is still legislation, because if this is the case, then this particular grant should not be supported. But going on from that, I would really like to speak on the way, I was a little bit concerned about the process. I have had, have spoken to council officers over the past week, and I think the council endorsed this initiative last year as an ongoing operational programme. I noted in this chamber that I was pleased that applications would be assessed as part of a robust competitive process. Having spoken to council officers over the past week, I can say with confidence that the applications were assessed against a weighted assessment criterion, with the highest-rated applications successful in receiving funding on this occasion. Obviously, every business that applied for funding would have liked to have been successful, but logic says that with the total level of funding request, significant greater than the funds allocated to the programme, that such an outcome is not possible. With a rapidly changing landscape, as has been evident in relation to the announcements relating to COVID-19 protocols, the importance of businesses, being fully aware of emerging issues including compliance with relevant legislation, has never been more critical. As a businessperson, I would encourage our local businesses to find time to actively engage with council through our economic growth unit by emailing business@wyndham.vic.gov.au. Working together, and this is where I think councillor Gilligan is coming from, working together, we will strengthen our resolve in building the local economy, developing strong and sustainable businesses and creating much-needed local jobs. Businesses must work with council because they cannot just expect council to hand out funds all the time. So the harder the work, and businesses should put 2.5% of their turnover into marketing and branding, which is not occurring at this stage. Council has been very generous with this initiative because in the past, the businesspeople did not have any support from local, state or federal governments. In those days, it was, you work harder and you survive or you fail. So what the council is doing now is very generous towards these businesses. I would like to thank Daryl and his team for taking a lead role in setting the local government agenda for economic development. And I'd like to congratulate the recipients of this funding, as always, and I look forward to continuing my own ongoing engagement with the business community. But I happen, I agree with this particular grant that councillor Gilligan has brought forward, and I would like to see that the councils check that councillors can apply as soon as they leave office. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Shaw?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting the amendment tonight, so, but I would like to just highlight that this was a competitive fund, it was initiated in two streams, one targeting young businesses up to two years old, including those who may not have yet initiated any sales, and one targeting more mature local small businesses. I think it's important that this fund does not represent giveaways. Payments to successful recipients, as with the Win Local Manufacturing Fund, will be by instalments, with all payments subject to clear evidence that the projects outlined in the applications are being delivered. The application process was robust, with applications assessed against a key assessment For young companies and startups, they were required to demonstrate that they had invested their own time, money and knowledge into planning and initiation of their business model, whilst great business ideas may be great in theory, without a strategic application of those ideas, any capacity for commercial success is nil. For more established companies, demonstrating innovation, building entrepreneurship capacity and investment in accelerated business actions, including diversification and expansion of their current offer, have been supported. So I agree with councillor Marcus. I would like to thank the Economic Development Unit for all the work that they have done in this fund as well, but I will also be supporting the amendment put forward by councillor Gilligan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In response to the statement or accusation by councillor Gilligan against our previous former councillor, I just want to say that I heard a lot of people speak very highly of our previous councillor, councillor Tony Hooper, and a lot of the statement made by councillor Gilligan is his personal opinion.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, not speaking to the motion. We're talking about two businesses, we're not talking about the individual.
I uphold, I uphold that-
I also have a point of order. So the point of order, councillor Hill just referred to the fact that this is my opinion. The facts, the facts, there was a how-to-vote card with you at number one that was issued, a ranking card, I mean, that's a fact.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
These materials are on the website.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan.
I do think it's important to clarify this.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. I will, I will clarify. Councillor Hill, you're not speaking to the motion. I would appreciate if you could please speak to the motion.
All businesses, thank you, Madam Mayor, all businesses have the equal right to apply, and I fully respect our officers is able to make good judgement on all the application, a recipient of those funds. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to first start by saying, my understanding councillor Marcus is, on asking this question regarding whether previous councillors could apply for this grant, I was told that previous councillors can apply, but I certainly feel that in the future, if grants of this sort were to be proposed again, that it would be a good idea to avoid or to exclude as part of the criteria of previous councillors, to avoid concerns that have been raised this evening. So my understanding is, it is not excluded, but I think it would be judicious to include some elements of that in the future to avoid some of these issues that have been raised. I wanted to say that local jobs for local people is what our area needs. So many of the issues we face as a community are the result of people having to leave our municipality for work. These grants are trying to effectively seek and support these small businesses to be innovative and create local jobs. So I am supportive of the main principle here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors which should speak? Councillor Zakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to preface my comments by saying that it's no, it's no secret that I have left-leaning political views. The comments made by councillor Gilligan about Tony Hooper's show, I do find shocking. However, if this business has met the criteria for the grant that they've applied for, if council officers believe that the business is deserving of the funds, then I believe that we should respect that process and approve the funding. To drag out an individual, out of $202,000, to drag out an individual business from this funding pool, based on what I see as a blatant political attack, is outrageous. I believe in the freedom of press. The business that former councillor Hooper is running is a media business. I don't agree with his views. I find them appalling. Do I believe that there's the right to have freedom of press in this country? Absolutely, I do. Do I believe that there's members of our community that would share his views, who pay rates, and would like to see this type of business funded? Absolutely, I do. Would I, would I expect any person in this room who holds right-leaning views to single out a person who runs a radio show or a media business that has left-leaning views because of those views? No, I don't, and I wouldn't support it either way. The freedom of press is really important in this country, and I'd like to see that upheld. I won't be supporting this motion. I encourage other councillors in this chamber not to support this motion, and when, if, should this motion be unsuccessful, I'll be putting forward the original, and I hope you support that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? As there's been a speaker against councillor Gilligan, you have a right of reply.
Thank you very much. I just find that extraordinary. I just, what an argument that all of us, it's a, you know, you might have right-wing views, you might have left-wing views, but at the end of the day, you're entitled to a view, so we should ultimately vote for it. What I am saying is, materials that says, 'Bunk ballots sent out en masse proves Democrats have corrupted the election, yet media blames Trump', puts democracy at risk. It's not about whether I have left-wing or right-wing views, this is about the fundamental principles that this chamber should believe in. We just voted on a grants programme which excluded businesses for political activities. This did not, and this is the problem. Of course, the assessment panel were absolutely diligent in their decision-making, but they were never asked to consider, in fairness, whether businesses that were engaging political activities should be exempt from this vote.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Hill?
My point of order is, a councillor must not make statements that could mislead the public, because if councillor Gilligan know about these things, I, he could have made aware of all the councillors, so we are able to look at the website and make the, make our own decision based on whatever he said.
Sorry, councillor Hill, I don't understand how that's likely to mislead or deceive a person, so I'm not going to be upholding that point of order at the moment.
An abuse of the points of orders, can I argue in response, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, councillor, thank you, councillor Gilligan. Would you like to finish up? You've got a minute.
So I guess, given that councillor Hill has injected that in the debate, I would, I would point out that it's not my job to do your job for you. If you can't check these things, then you are clearly not doing your job. If you say to me, I need to come tell you about these things, then I question how you're coming to decisions.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, is a lack of respect for others. Thank you.
Well, in fairness, you are disrespectful to me, so-
Councillor Gilligan, thank you. Can you finish up? You've got 30 seconds.
Yeah, look, I will, by saying that it would be an extraordinary precedent based on what we now know to be voting this up. This has nothing to do with the due diligence of the assessment panel. They were asked to meet a criteria, and they did. What I am saying to you is, this particular issue relates to political activities, and ratepayer funds should not be used for this purpose, whether they're left or they're right-wing, or they're any sort of wing. We should not be endorsing material like that. Thank you very much, Madam-
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost.
Wow.
Thank you, councillors. Councillors, all those in favour?
Wow.
Councillor Barrera, councillor Marcus, councillor Shaw, councillor Hegeditich, councillor Gilligan. All those against? Councillor Maynard, councillor Zakowski, councillor Ramesh, councillor Hill, councillor McIntyre and councillor Mufford. Thank you. Councillor Zakowski, I believe you had foreshadowed a motion. You want to revert back to the substantive?
That's correct, yes, Madam Mayor. I believe that the recommendation that was placed by the officers is the best recommendation, and therefore that's the motion I will move.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Is there a second to that motion? Councillor Ramesh? Councillor Zakowski, as the mover, would you like to speak on the item?
I believe I've said all I need to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and there's been a lot said on this, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Gilligan?
This is unprecedented. I think some councillors that haven't said anything should explain their actions, frankly, because I'm sure will go away with some other views as to what just happened if they don't. So I would appreciate the courtesy in trying to understand how you formed a view that things like attacking, attacking the sexual orientation of the US military on a website is okay, and yet you'll be voting for things like the gender equality policy.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, I do not believe the statement being made is actually, is actually correct.
Which was the point of order?
The statement is potentially incorrect.
And?
And it misled the public. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And what's the statement that he's misleading? Which statement are you referring to?
I feel uncomfortable to repeat the statement that councillor Gilligan had just mentioned.
I know you're embarrassed, and I would be too if I voted for this.
That's not what I meant.
I moved that this motion be put to vote, because this debate is not constructive anymore.
Thank you, councillor Ramesh.
I'm in the middle of my-
Can I get a second for that procedural motion?
I'm in the middle of a debate.
Councillors, councillor Ramesh has asked that the motion be put. Councillor, councillor, councillor Hill has seconded that motion. We're now, I now put the motion that the, I now put councillor Ramesh's motion to the vote. All those in favour?
You can't do that. This is ridiculous.
Against?
I move dissent in the chair, if that's, if that's how we're going to play this. This is ridiculous, to censure and gag.
Thank you, councillor-
I'm actually serious, Madam Mayor.
No, that's fine, thank you.
I move that there be dissent in the chair. I don't think that's ever happened in my time here, but I intend to move that matter. You'll need to vacate the chair.
Councillor Gilligan, you'll need to find a second for that, please.
There we go.
Councillor Shaw, all those in favour?
I assume I get to speak on the item of vacating the chair.
I don't think so, but I'll check the governance rules.
You dictate the play, Madam Mayor, it looks like, so. And you'll have to vacate the chair. I'll have to put the deputy in.
Councillor Gilligan, governance has instructed that you can talk on that, on the motion of dissent, so you are welcome to open-
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm glad I'm not gagged for this moment, because I just think this has been an extraordinary meeting tonight, where councillors talk about freedom of speech, and then lecture me on freedoms of speech, and then move to gag me on the same night. I mean, I don't know any reasonable person that would look at this meeting and go, why are we not allowing robust and healthy debate about these matters? What are we hiding here? Why are we not having these robust conversations, not in a back room, where the community can see them in a healthy, democratic way? And it is an extraordinary thing to have to move dissent in, in the mayor, but frankly, I'm shocked at the behaviour that I have seen in terms of going ultimately down the pathway of allowing procedural motions to proceed, and not taking a stand in saying, well, the governance practice is silent on this matter, but I will make a position as the chairperson, which is in your prerogative to do so, Madam Mayor. And so that is why I am supporting a motion of dissent, because I think it is important that we be clear about the processes and the healthy functioning democracy that we and ratepayers fund. We are all paid by ratepayers to be here, they have a right to know what is going on. You know, the events over the last six months have been concerning, and this is just a whole new level of concern about my ability to have a frank and proper conversation in here, in a free and- here, in a free and open way, and I walk away feeling very disheartened and, you know, concerned, that, you know, people around this table are not being given the opportunity to exercise their view, rightly or wrongly. Whether you agree with it or you don't, that is what this place is all about. And the minute we accept a culture of, you know, moving from removing elected representatives to now gagging people's ability to have a say, where does it stop? I mean, it does, it does come a bit of a dictatorship, frankly, if that's the, the culture we set, where people cannot have a say. So that is why I am moving the motion of dissent, to make that point, because I just don't know what other way I can make the point that I have just been able to make, because I probably would have had been told that I've got to shut up and, you know, go to a vote, because that seems to be what a number of councillors are pushing on matters which frankly should be canvassed in this chamber. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Are there any other councillors which should speak? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, madam mayor. Unfortunately, I do agree tonight, I, I think this has been extremely disappointing, we saw that in the first meeting, we've seen it in the second, and councillor Gilligan is correct, we're here to discuss and debate these items, we're not here to shut people down. And I think last term, I think I heard we were going to put, I think we put a motion twice, maybe, in the whole, yeah, in the whole term? I think I've heard it three or four times, at least three or four tonight, in both meetings, and I find this really highly concerning, because it is about stifling debate, it is about having a discussion, I've never really supported it, not especially where in, in the middle of the debate. I think that becomes a problem, it does interfere with free speech, it does interfere with our roles as councillors in terms of things that we would like to put forward and debate and discuss, whether you like them or not, that's what we're actually here to do. And to actually, and it's only been a couple of people in the room, actually, to be fair, for those councillors who have continued to do that this evening is highly concerning, but for the chair, for the mayor of this city, the leader, to continue to support it and not make a stand, quite frankly, is really disappointing. And I don't really know how the meeting can continue, until we actually get, I know there'll be a vote on it, I gather the same people will vote the same way as we've seen tonight, we've seen the same councillor continue not to support amendments of another councillor, it's a real concerning pattern of behaviour, but more concerning is the fact that we are being stifled and gagged through our conversations and debate tonight. Not only that, I think we've had councillors who don't understand points of order, who clearly don't understand points of order, who just say a point of order and then just say what they, whatever they think. There's actually a process and a rule for that, that needs to be upheld and abided by, and that's actually just not happening. So I think we've got a serious issue, we've, we've seen it tonight, and unfortunately, I, I hate bringing these things, I don't think we should be having these discussions as a group, but I think tonight it's been highly disappointing, I'm very concerned, and I actually agree, that some people tonight have been gagged and silenced deliberately.
Point of order, madam mayor, on the, on the sheet that I have in front of me, and if you don't mind me saying, following a chair's ruling, any motion of dissent must be moved immediately. I'm not sure why we're even debating this.
Where is that, sorry?
It's on the sheet of paper that was put in front of us.
Just on a point of clarification, given that there is a resolution for dissent in the chair, how the chair could still remain in it?
Governance have advised that I don't need to vacate the chair.
That is, again, an extraordinary, unusual, abnormal...
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors wish to make any comments? Councillor Zakowski, and then I'll get councillor Marcus.
Thank you, madam mayor. I know it's, I know it's been six months, but, but early in the term, councillor Gilligan said that it's unusual for a motion of dissent, he seemed to use it reluctantly, but people in this room may recall me resorting to that measure as well. Now, from time to time, people in this room would not like decisions of the chair, and thank you, madam mayor, for, for enduring this, because it's quite the challenge being in the chair, and we're not always going to like the decisions that are made. She has been duly elected, she does hold the chair, I've moved the motion to send. Unfortunately, I didn't get a second on that one, it was early on, I don't think people in the room quite understood what I was attempting to do. You're very lucky councillor Gilligan, in, in having the success that you have in, in having this motion of dissent seconded. But what I will say is, is that the, the arguments you've made were the exact same tactics that were used earlier in the year, in, in the founding meetings of, of this term of council. The precedent's been set around calling it to be put to the vote. Those tactics have already been utilised, they've already been, been used for, for your purposes, I believe it was councillor Barrera who, who moved the motion to put a matter to the vote, it's, it's a perfectly reasonable function of, of our meetings. What I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't actually believe that there's any dissent in the chair at all, I don't believe she's done anything wrong. I think she's following the rules that exist.
Councillor Gilligan, councillor Zakowski's talking, so unless you're calling a point of order, allow him to finish.
On relevance, in terms of how is that related to whether you do or you don't support the dissent in the chair? It's not about what...
Thank you councillor Zakowski.
What I'm saying is, I, I believe the chair's doing her job, and there's been times I haven't agreed, and there's times that you haven't agreed, but I see nothing here that says anything about Adele doing the wrong thing. I don't see anything, I can't see even how this could be even possibly considered to be a dissent in the chair. I'll even concede that it was only through frustration that I even moved that motion when I was first in council, because there, there were tactics that were being utilised, exactly the same way we're utilising them. We've went for the best, Josh, I appreciate it, thank you. You've, you've taught us all, all the little dirty tricks that, that you understand can be used, and I don't believe, I don't believe that in this instance you've, you've utilised the rules in an appropriate manner. There is no dissent in this chair.
Madam mayor...
Are you calling a point of order?
Yeah, look, I am.
Which one?
Well, I'm sure there is one on disrespect, I mean, that would not meet the bloody Wyndham governance rules, that's for sure, I just, how disrespectful to assert that governance rules have been used in, in a dirty way.
Thank you.
I, I want that retracted, don't, don't thank me, I, I'm not happy with this, and I'm asking you as the chair, in a dissent motion...
Can you please retract that statement councillor Zakowski?
I withdraw that comment, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Zakowski.
I, I withdraw my comment that the tactics that we're using are dirty.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gilligan, councillor Zakowski, councillor Hill.
Thank you, madam mayor. Madam mayor, I think this is a difficult meeting to chair, and I think you have done it really well, thank you so much, and they had the conversation, this discussion tonight, which is to offend our valuable community members publicly, there are personal attacks being openly discussed and just being brought up, and I feel really uncomfortable, I think when the debate is not constructive, we should absolutely put to a vote. Therefore, madam mayor, I think you have done a really good job, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hill. Any other councillors which should discuss this item? Councillor Marcus, sorry, I think you had your hand up, my apologies.
Thank you. I, I think I'm almost speechless. Being in this city for 52 years, looking at all of our former councillors who never ever, ever, ever behaved in this manner, most of them would be rolling over their graves tonight to see the behaviour. I, I believe we were gagged on one of the items on the agenda. Our residents do not deserve this type of behaviour, they elected us to be their leaders. Being a leader is out there doing the right thing, not sitting around a council chamber having a go at each other. Please councillors, let's restore behaviour and get on. What do you think our council offices are feeling? How do they think they can work with this type of behaviour? As far as I'm concerned, you're not going to get rid of me, I'm not going anywhere. I went through a very dark patch, and none of you came to my assistance, you were happy to downgrade me, but I am not going away, because my residents in the Irremu ward and all the residents in this city deserve better. Councillors, please have a look at your behaviour. I am ashamed, as I said very early in this piece, I do not want our residents saying that we are not leaders, because I've done a lot of work, but it's the residents that make us the good leaders that we should be. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should discuss this item? I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Motion of dissent to a vote, all those in favour? Against? I'm abstaining, thank you. The motion has been lost, thank you. The procedural motion will continue as previously outlined by councillor, requested by councillor Ramesh and seconded by councillor Hill. So on that, on that case, I now put the motion to, put the motion to a vote. I now, I now put the substantive motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Thank you councillors. Councillors, councillor Gilligan has called for a division. Councillors, all, all those in favour? Councillor Mafud, councillor McIntyre, councillor Hill, councillor Ramesh, councillor Zakowski, councillor Maynard. All those against? Councillor Gilligan, councillor Barrera, councillor Marcus and councillor Shaw. And I am abstaining from the vote. Thank you councillors. Item 6.5.5, protecting and preserving land for future schools in Wyndham, the report is on pages 127 to 142, the recommendation is on 128. Councillors, do I have a mover?
I guess I'm happy to move, but I do have an amendment at the same time.
Thank you councillor Gilligan, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm seeking to add an additional item, number six, that we write to the local state members for Tarnit, Warrabee and Eltona, asking them to personally pledge support for the introduction of a bespoke applied zone for use in PSPs, be developed for non-government schools by the state government in conjunction with councils and the non-government school sector.
Thank you councillor Gilligan, do you have a second to that motion? Or that amendment?
I'm going to move it as amended.
You're moving it as a substantive with the amendment, yes. So ultimately councillors, just to explain, we've got five points plus a six, so we've got effectively six points on the table, so that's the motion that councillor Gilligan has put on the table. Is there a second to that change councillor Shaw? Councillor Gilligan, as the mover of the motion, would you like to speak to the, the amendment and, and the motion?
Thanks very much, madam mayor, I'll speak briefly in relation to point six, and that's ensuring that we get support from the local state members where we need it most, and that is about ensuring that the four odd school sites in Warrabee, that the handful of sites in Tarnit, and the at least one site in the state seat of Eltona are considered in terms of getting the state members' support to move on this very important reform that is so desperately needed to protect the land that should be reserved for schools, which is essentially being turned into housing. We know that in the VCAT decision in relation to the Elements Estate site, that a decision was ultimately made to approve some 227 lots on land that was designated for a school, and our position has been since that moment to look at ways to improve and enhance and deliver ultimately the strongest possible measures from a planning perspective that we as a council can take to prevent a situation like Elements from ever happening again. There are some important parts to this resolution, madam mayor, that shows that we're going to do absolutely everything we can on a local government level, but we also need the state to do their fair share too. Encouraging landowners and developers to put as part of their development agreements with council to pledge that they will protect that land for school sites moving forward, giving certainty to those families in the estates and confidence that the infrastructure that they thought was going to be there must be delivered, and that they've got a guarantee, a pledge if you will, from the developer, that they will make sure that it is delivered as best they can in a private sector sense. But it's also ensuring that where the private sector fails, and in the case of Truganina, it has failed, ensuring that land that is ultimately allocated for social infrastructure is not then turned into more residential housing. And that is why a bespoke applied zone is important, because making sure that zoning as part of the planning scheme adds an additional layer of protection, demonstrates from a planning strategic justification point of view that this land must remain for a school site, and makes it very hard for a developer to overturn that decision through a judicial body, and is consistent with the values that this council fundamentally believes in. More broadly, it is important that the state then allows us to get on with the job of doing that, and we will need the minister for planning to ultimately provide approval to allow such a zone to exist. If it's good enough for heritage buildings and the protection and preservation of heritage buildings, as has been outlined by the minister in terms of the Planning and Environment Act amendment that has been recently put in the parliament, then it is good enough for school sites to be protected from overcrowding and for families to be given the certainty that they need. That is why I encourage councillors to back in what is the strongest possible measures this evening for this, for estates, for our community, to ensure that thousands of kids are not being crammed into schools, because we know that in the planning documents, there are a minimum requirement of schools that must be delivered, and if there is just one less private school delivered, if there is just one less block of land that's delivered for a school, that will see hundreds, if not thousands, of kids pushed into other schools right across our municipality. There is a no brainer motion here tonight, we need to make sure that we back this into the hilt, that we get the reform that the state must implement, and that we get certainty from our state members that they will back us in too, and not just back us, back the families, back the estates, back the communities, and I think this is one of the best reports I've seen in my time at Wyndham City, I want to thank officers for the work they've done on this, and I'm excited by the future if we can get on with implementing the parts that we can do in local government, but also advocate strongly for change at the state, for them to get on and do their part too. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Gilligan.
Madam mayor, I just want to foreshadow an alternative, should this motion knock it up.
Thank you councillor Zakowski. Any other councillors which should speak to this motion? I now put the motion to a, councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, madam mayor, sorry, I was expecting more people to comment, I was a bit slow. So, madam mayor, I actually agree with councillor Gilligan's notice of motion, our residents need to have security knowing if they buy an estate that has an area for school, that's what it will be. Most of our residents, and we know, are born overseas, where planning processes are often very different. Many places, like in the UK, have schools in place prior to the housing, so no wonder many residents are confused and disappointed. We should try and put in place, I believe, as many restrictions and regulations as we can, so that developers deliver the vision they sell to purchasers and to the wider community. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. Councillor Marcus?
Yes, I would just like to add that I think this is a great report, and I think it's important now that we look at having as, as many non-government schools as we can, I think I've said before that when we've been in Canberra advocating, they've said about trying to get more non-government schools. I have asked this question many times of council officers, how many of our students are leaving this city every day to go to schools in Geelong? Because there's about six or seven schools that have a large number of their students. Backus Marsh Grammar have bus after bus going, so why are they leaving? I know that there's particular schools that they want their children to go to, but if we had more of the non-government schools here, those children do not have to leave this city at seven o'clock in the morning and get back here at six o'clock at night to get the education they want. So I, I think it's a really good idea, good, a good item on the agenda, but I think it is in time, it is time that we look to see if we could get more Catholic education and the independent schools here to open their schools in this city.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should discuss this item? Councillor Hill?
Thank you, madam mayor. A lot of hard work, it's already has been done by our acting CEO, tried to advocate for schools and also protect, preserve the land for future schools in, in the, the area that we talk about, and I just want to thank Natalie Walker for working so hard in this space and her team. And if this has not been done already, right to the local state members, Tarnit, I believe we have a lot of communication with our local members... I believe we have a lot of communication with our local members all the time. So I, I will be supporting this amendment, by the way, because we should do all we can to ensure we protect the land for future schools around Wyndham City Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Any other councillors? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Government schools, Catholic schools, independent schools, we need schools. You know, I, it's great to see the breakdown of these in this table. But I think our advocacy around schools for Wyndham has been really clear. We need schools. And in the report, it actually states that the city of Wyndham will require the equivalent of 115 school sites by 2041. 115. So, you know, whatever the debate is about Catholic, independent, government, it's irrelevant to me. The fact is, we need schools in this city and we're not getting enough schools in this city. And we're seeing that gap. I think this is a great report. I think council officers have done a great job on this. I think the notice of motion was a great piece of work. I think we've seen the report that has come out of that. And I think our stance remains the same.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillors. Shaw, any other councillors which should speak on this item? I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 6.5.6, Local Law Reforms. The report is on pages 143 to 148. Recommendation is on pages 143 with the attachments on 149 to 156. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Omeish, do I have a second? Councillor Gilligan. Councillor Omeish, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Omeish. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Gilligan.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. A great example of policy on the run turning into substantial change that's going to impact on our city, most importantly, when it comes to making sure that we have the beautification of our nature strips. I know that was an issue that some campaigned very hard on and one that we're getting on with and delivering, initiated by a notice of motion, of course, as is indicated in this paper. But it is important that we start to talk about the owners of responsibility, as I have mentioned, in terms of the proposal that's ultimately been considered with due diligence by officers and come with a slightly different, in fairness, ultimate recommendation. But nevertheless, it captures in essence the intention of the notice of motion. It is about ensuring that we look to measures that support owners of vacant land to understand the benefits of fencing it, to ensure that they ultimately are no longer the target of persistent rubbish dumping. It's also about saying that quite clearly in our nature strip policy, that the responsibility of the nature strip falls to the property occupier and/or owner. We currently don't do that now. Our policy and our local laws only require a fire hazard in large part to be the trigger, if you will, to ultimately issue a notice to comply to a household. We've got to change that. We've got to broaden that out. And that is exactly what ultimately this will do with this proposed recommendation. Building it into our local neighbourhood and a better community. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you very much. In the recommendation, it says, update the beautification of nature strip policy to provide a clear description of expectations for nature strip maintenance by residents in Wyndham. I think we need to update the actual policy because I think it was, the last one was done in 2008. So I, I think there's some, some items in that policy, like I don't think we should be using gravel and pebbles and all that type of thing. We're talking about heat island effect. We're talking about canopy cover. We just allowed Alex RP to come down and chop down a lot of our trees out here. People are telling me that, you know, the, the trees have died, they're not getting replacement. So I think, and I've said it before, and hopefully I think the councils that they would be coming back, we need to educate our people better and we need to organise a competition for the best street in, in the city to try and get everybody to come. It'll bring the people together. They will then get to know each other because at the moment, you don't even get to know your neighbours, that type of thing. So I just would like to see a new updated nature strip policy so that, you know, everybody knows exactly where they are. And I, I just noticed coming down to the council today, the medium strip out here, I think all those poor little plants have probably died in the wind today. And I hope the council did talk with the DOT to make sure that we had a good say. But it just doesn't look good. All of the medium strips in this city, people are talking about it. And I think it's something that we just need to do and look at. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the, councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The presentation of our municipality is a concern. I believe that these measures will help deliver a place we're proud of. And I believe it also does need to be, as councillor Marcus has said, also part of a broader, greater dialogue that also includes education and communication. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors? I put the motion now to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 7, Notices of Motion. Item 7.1, Notice of Motion 607, Improving Library Services in Wyndham, Formerly Truganina Library. Report is on pages 157 to 158 with the recommendation on pages 159. Councillor Hill, this is your motion. Would you like to move the motion as tabled?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I, can I just highlight that there is an error made inadvertently to the title of this motion by the officers? The correct title should be Improving Library Services in Wyndham. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so noted. Councillor Hill, I'm not going to ask you to read it out, just in the interest of time. So it says tabled. Councillor Hill, do I have a second? Do you have a second for this motion? Councillor Maynard? Thank you, councillor Gilligan.
Madam Mayor, I just want to flag that I intend to put an amendment.
So would you like to flag, read your amendment, please? Or as tabled with the councillors?
Yes, I can certainly read it. I intend to add to this resolution as follows. One, that council reaffirms its commitment to delivering the Williams Landing Library and Community Centre. Two, that council recognises that all libraries in accordance with the existing library service strategy 2018 to 2040 must first be delivered before any new proposed sites arising from this new report. Three, council notes that budgetary pressures make any new proposed libraries outside of those currently proposed in this strategy are unlikely to be delivered in the foreseeable future. And four, council will not consider acquisition of land for any sites within the scope of this report.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Do you have a second for that amendment? Councillor Shaw, thank you. Councillor Gilligan, can you please speak to why you're putting the amendment forward?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I have serious concerns about the budgetary pressure that will be placed arising from this report. The report is, seems to be quite direct in terms of trying to isolate Williams Landing from other suburbs through a view to try and create data.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, there is no mention of the Williams Landing in the original motion.
I'd have to agree with councillor Hill. The motion as tabled this evening, there was no mention of a specific library, so.
So, Madam Mayor, it does refer to the existing library strategy. So in essence, it absolutely does and is relevant. So it is worth acknowledging that. And before I was cut off, note the fact that I don't think we're going to be able to have both. And so ultimately, if, if we are ultimately going down the line of proposing a library in one suburb, we're going to kill it off in another. And I think it's important that we stand with the people of Williams Landing.
Point of order again, Madam Mayor, there is no mention of any suburb in this original motion.
Thank you, councillor Hill. I uphold that motion again, that point of order again.
In context though, Madam Mayor, you asked for me to clarify the purpose of the amendment.
That's fine. Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on the amendment? Your councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that libraries are a really valued service here in Wyndham City. And I believe in a quality of access to these important services. And I want to see well-informed decision-making made by this council as to investment into library infrastructure and services. I've been saying over and over all year that I would like more information and a briefing on library services and library infrastructure. I won't be supporting this alternative motion tonight. I believe it commits council to adhere to existing library services through the Library Service Strategy 2018 to 2040 without any consideration of any possible amendments, and it lacks flexibility. This is in advance of councillors being briefed. We have had indication that we will be briefed in detail about this strategy and planned library infrastructure and services. And I'll be in a better position to make an informed decision on this matter once that detailed briefing has taken place.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Any other councillors which should speak on the amendment? Councillor Shaw?
Oh yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting it. The decision was already made on Williams Landing, so I don't know why we need more information and be flexible around changing it. It was actually a decision from last term. So if someone can correct me if I'm wrong about that, and if we're going to keep changing decisions in our minds on things, we are going to, we are going to find ourselves in a real predicament, especially around this issue. The Library Services Strategy 2018 to 2040 considered the current and future locations of library across the municipality and the catchment sizes. It found that additional libraries included in the precinct structure plans would be sufficient to service populations between 40,000 to 55,000 people. It concluded that the planned libraries were of an appropriate size and geographically located to ensure that the majority of Wyndham residents would live within two to three kilometres of their nearest library branch. However, it did highlight a gap for future residents of Truganina and Williams Landing who would be four to seven kilometres from their closest library and recommended further service planning to be undertaken. The Wyndham Libraries Action Plan 2018 to 2022 included the following action, which has been endorsed by council, to undertake detailed service planning for provision of community service in Williams Landing and Truganina. That work is actually happening now. I think we've had conversations about this at a previous meeting this evening, that this is actually already in place. It's happening. And yet here we are, talking about a notice of motion and people asking for information. I've already documented information, decisions. And really, I think councillors should be looking into this, to be making informed decisions about what they should be actually supporting and not supporting. And whether, council officers spent a lot of time and energy on this, as did a lot of councillors last term, in understanding this and endorsing this for this community. The work was completed in mid-2018 and determined that based on service planning, the need for additional community infrastructure in Williams Landing was only marginally justified. But we actually did endorse it to go forward to support that community there. Funding was allocated through the previous council to commence planning for a library and community centre that would service the areas of Williams Landing and Truganina. Council also committed to exploring other interim activities to increase, to increase library services in this area. This included funding for a library vending machine and a hub, providing some library services within a retail setting within Williams Landing.
Can you please finish up?
I will. I think I've said enough about this. I think we've been advised that the other work that's being undertaken is going to be completed by November this year. So quite frankly, I do support the amendment because it's actually endorsed council position from last term. We cannot keep changing our minds on these things. These are strategies that council officers have done a lot of work on, that have been properly, have gone through proper governance and decision-making process, and they need to stand.
Thanks, councillor Shaw. Councillor Mufford?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I too won't be supporting this amendment to the motion. I, this is, you know, yes, of course, I do take on board what councillor Shaw said. There is a library services strategy, 2018 to 2040. But from my knowledge, the projections have changed, you know, population projections have changed. And sometimes you do have to, you know, have to look at your strategies. And sometimes amendments need to be made. But, but what we're not saying here, what is not in the original motion that is before us, there is no talk about removing the Williams Landing library. So I need to make that clear. That is part of the reason why I'm not supporting the amendment. The original motion is asking for a report on library services and infrastructure planning by council. I don't see any harm in that, anything wrong in that. If we could have a detailed report on the planning, on the analysis of accessibility of library services for all residents, I don't think, again, that hurts at all. And also, again, really want to point out again, there's no mention at all about removing a library for Williams Landing community.
Thank you, councillor Mufford. Councillor Omeish?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to say that councillor Hill has framed a neutral, non-incinuating request that is requesting basic facts that underpin the current and future health of our library services to be communicated for discussion. It does not attack any previous decisions made in the previous term. There's no value in siphoning out special cases that are not to be touched. I don't believe that adding constraints to this report does anything other than prove that the portfolio is unhealthy. I will not be endorsing any of these constraints.
Thank you, councillor Omeish. I think there was a councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting this amendment either. I think it's crucial for communities like Williams Landing to have the library services that they need. I agree with councillor Barrera and think and believe we need to refresh the existing Library Service Strategy 2018 to 2040 to ensure it meets our growth, demand and our community expectations. Covid taught us to be agile. This motion, which is more than a, an amendment, it looks to me more like an alternative and it seeks to lock us into an out-of-date strategy. I want to make informed decisions on data and I'm surprised by any councillors that don't want that for our community. Given the fact that councillor Gilligan has raised this amendment, this has not yet allowed councillor Hill to explain why she has requested this report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Zakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Meeshaw was correct in raising the issue around Williams Landing. And the last term of council had great benefit in having this report, 2018 to 2040. Now, when, when reports are produced, they're usually produced on data that precedes, precedes the strategy date. So the information that decisions were made in the last term date back probably before 2018. I can't say that categorically, but it's my belief that they would have.
The decisions of council to allocate that funding were made after 2018?
On, based on data that was produced for a report, 2018 to 2040 as a strategy.
Councillor Shaw, what's your point of order, if you're calling it?
Well, he said he wasn't sure if the decisions had been made before. And I said they had been made, the decisions for the funding had been made after.
Is it on the sheet?
Oh, statements that are, sorry, I apologise. Statements that are, that will or likely to mislead or deceive.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. I believe, my understanding of what councillor Zakowski said was that the data within the 2018 related to information that was obtained prior to 2018, and that's the point he was making.
It was around decisions made, but we can move on.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I'll, I'll clarify my comments. The, the decision that was made around Williams Landing Library was based on a report that had data that preceded 2018. That's my belief. And my understanding of the report and how reports are produced and presented to council. Now, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going in any way, shape or form criticise, criticise decisions that were made by previous councils. They, they made the best decision that they could, using their best judgment with any information that was presented to them at hand. And, and we should have the same opportunity. If, if it means revoking decisions, so be it. I'm not preempting that's going to occur. And I don't think there's anything in this motion that suggests that's going to happen. But everything that's been written in this motion as put is only asking for information that will best inform us to make decisions around providing the adequate services for this community. Now, if this report comes back and says that it's better to reallocate any library in this community, then we should consider that.
There we go.
Any library. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. So if we.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan.
If we.
Continue, councillor Zakowski.
Yeah, fantastic interjection. Appreciate it. Thank you. So if, if this report comes back and says that, for example, and, and there's, there's been plenty of instances I've, we've had in briefings where the relocation, relocation of various libraries for various reasons have been suggested, then this report will give us that information that we need to make these decisions. So I, I'm not sure why precluding any particular library has any value other than to support. other than to support a personal political objective or, you know, maintaining a personal political stance based on promises made. I think we need to rise above that. We need to be making the best decisions with the best information.
Madam Mayor, point of order. Statements that are likely to mislead or deceive. This is not about promises. It makes it sound sort of a bit dirty. It's actually about a strategy that was endorsed by council based on an officer recommendation. I uphold that statement. So councillor Zakowski, just finish up, please.
What does that mean? What do you mean when you say uphold? There has to be a request for me to retract. Otherwise, what's the point?
Can you please retract the fact that you made the statement about promises, please?
I possibly would be willing to consider that. Can you please restate the statements you wish for me to withdraw?
You said that it was about promises that we've made. It's not about promises. It's about an endorsed strategy of council based on officer recommendations. The word promises make it sound like we've done something a little bit, you know, dirty.
Okay, I concede. I withdraw that.
We've actually endorsed a position based on councillor officer recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Shaw.
I concede. Is that enough? I concede. I withdraw my comments around making promises.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski.
My position doesn't change, however, in that the motion as it stands says nothing, nothing about singling out particular libraries. It's about giving us the best information to make the best decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Councillor Marcus?
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering why this notice of motion was ever put up? For the simple reason it was made very clear to us at the last strategic briefing that our officers were doing a report, an up-to-date report. So I don't understand now, and as councillor Shaw read out, I would like to be brought, councillor, council office, I'd like to be brought up to date on what is happening at Williams Landing also. So I think we can be very proud of the work that our officers have done. We do a very good job on our library services, and it is a known fact by our residents that they, that council excel in this area. As a growing city, we have many challenges and we must prioritise where we're putting our facilities. In 2013, as I've said before, we said clearly, if there is no infrastructure, there is no growth. That was eight years ago. Now, please, we, as we've just talked about our financial budget, we can't have everything. We can't. And if councillor Shaw read it out in our strategic briefing, Williams Landing was to be looked at. So council officers, I want to know, is there anything happening at Williams Landing at this stage? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I won't be supporting this amendment that's put, as I did second the notice of motion. It's calling for a report. Councillor Hill has been working with officers for some time now to put together a notice of motion that she feels best represents her concerns. We are not, and I am not, considering stopping the process of the library at Williams Landing. As has been alluded to, we are already in the process of doing it. So even if we wanted to stop it, you couldn't even move a notice of rescission because we've started the thing or the process.
Point of order. That's most fundamentally flawed. You can do whatever you like on a budget. So that's, I wouldn't want to mislead the community. I think that's worth getting councillor Maynard to clarify that, remember.
So what's your point of order? Statements that are likely to mislead or deceive?
Absolutely.
Councillor Maynard, can you?
I'm happy to provide context. It is absolutely the opportunity of this council.
Can we just wait till the mayor provides the response?
To kill this, and that's my concern this evening, that we're, you know, we're going to walk away from Williams Landing.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
I'm ignoring you all because I've got the floor at the moment, and I'm not listening to anyone at the moment.
Okay. Oh, jeez. Do something about those jeez.
Councillor Gilligan, I'm not upholding the point of order. Councillor Maynard, you can continue.
On what basis?
I'm not upholding the point of order because councillor Maynard has stated that, which is factually correct, if a motion that has been moved and a decision has been made by council, it is exceptionally difficult to rescind it if it has already been acted upon. So in some way-
That's not what he actually, he said you cannot. He made it clear that we couldn't walk away from the project.
He did. I've made my ruling on it. Thank you. Councillor Maynard, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. And further to that, what I'm saying is that the report that will be provided by officers will provide information to councillors to make decisions on future library provisions. Ones that we will make decisions on, should we be able to fund them in the budget. It's not putting budgetary, it's not putting pressure on a budget because we haven't decided what we're going to do going forward. We have not. And that's one of the reasons why, Madam Mayor, that we're doing a long-term financial plan. That's one of the reasons why we do a four-year plan. And that's also another reason why we provide strategies and policies for this council to make decisions going forward. We have made a decision on Williams Landing. We are going to, we're going down the path of providing that. My comments are based around the fact that this council will be-
So point of order, Madam Mayor, we actually do not have a budget allocation. Misleading, misleading. Councillor Maynard is asserting that we have essentially looked to fund this project. There is no funding in this budget for this library, and that is precisely why this amendment has been put. I would ask councillor Maynard to clarify that point, given that he seems to have insinuated that somehow this was proceeding. There is no money for it.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Maynard. Councillor Gilligan has asked that you clarify that statement in regards to the current-
What you're ruling, Madam Mayor?
Sorry?
You're ruling.
I'm upholding his position that if you-
You're upholding his, well, my comment is, is that whether or not it's allocated in the budget, we've agreed to provide library services to Williams Landing. So I'm assuming that the process has begun and it will happen whenever it happens. I'm not saying that we're doing it tomorrow.
Thank you, councillor Maynard.
I'm not saying we're doing it next week.
You can continue. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Thank you. You're most welcome. And, you know, I'm more than happy to do that. And that's the end of my commentary. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Any other councillors which should speak to the amendment? If not, I put the amendment to a vote. All those in favour? Against?
Hope for division. I'll get in this time.
The motion has been lost. All those in favour of the amendment? Councillor Gilligan, councillor Shaw, councillor Marcus, all those against the amendment? Councillor Mufford, councillor McIntyre, councillor Hill, councillor Ramesh, councillor Hegeditch, councillor Zakowski, councillor Maynard and councillor Barrera. Thank you. We go back to the substantive. So councillor Hill, you had moved the motion, and therefore you have five minutes to speak, as you have not spoken as yet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Libraries in Wyndham are highly valued community service. Libraries not only provide access to a diverse range of literature that can uplift our culture, arts and education. Modern libraries now also provide an intellectual meeting place, the ideal environment for study for children and adults, and access to experts on a wide range of learning topics. Our libraries are one of the key assets that provide the council with positive influence on the culture of our community and the future health and wealth of our people. There are currently five libraries situated across the municipality and a further for our plan to meet the future needs of our growing suburbs. The four additional libraries have been located in the precinct structure plans, allowing for an analysis of the future end state availability and efficiency to this key service. This motion requests an update on the critical variables that define the health of our library services across the entire Wyndham. The ease of access to services by each and all residents, the utilisation levels that ensure quality of service, and the remaining capacity embedded into the infrastructure to support our future population growth. The last report received by council on library facilities was conducted in 2018. Over the last three years, significant deviations from forecasts have occurred that warrants a comprehensive refresh of the plan. Community feedback that has been received also indicate that the history of library construction and localised densities of population growth across Wyndham has left an imbalance of service coverage across the city. The requested report will provide the factual information that will validate or disprove this concern and enable council to make informed decisions on possible improvements to the library facilities across the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Any other councillors which should speak on this notice of motion? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a number of councillors have raised this topic, I think it's important to communicate that we have the communication that a library hub and a book locker service will be available in Williams Landing in the coming months. And it is a great addition to, obviously, the library services that we currently offer in Wyndham. I just wanted to reiterate that it is crucial that communities like Williams Landing and Truganina and all the other suburbs get the resources they need. We're going to look at all the services that we offer, and as been mentioned many times this evening, we are looking at that whole 10-year plan. So I believe we need those information. We need that data to make the most appropriate choices going forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, Wyndham prides itself on being a learning city, and our libraries provide a great asset to our communities through their collections, access to lifelong learning programmes, literacy support and access to information technology. I'm keen to see the continued development of our library services, and I'm keen to see them keep pace with community expectations and more importantly, with changing needs of community. This was the intent of the Library Services Strategy 2018 to 2040, and this still holds true. I will be supporting this notice of motion tonight, not because I think it's a particularly good notice of motion, but because simply it allows officers to continue to work on work already underway to refresh service planning across Wyndham and to develop innovative approaches to improve community access to library services across Wyndham. To effectively make decisions, we need to understand the forecast demand for services offered by libraries and the catchments and the levels of services that we want to commit to. This notice of motion does not stop officers from the work that they've already undertaken. I commend officers on the work they've done. I apologise for the time they've had to waste around this particular notice of motion. Once we get that report, that will then help us to make the informed decisions we need to make around how we might respond to unmet demand in a way that is planned, that's equitable and sustainable for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Any other councillors which should speak on this notice of motion? Councillor Marcus?
I would just like to thank councillor Barrera for her very wise comments tonight. As I said, I did have a phone call from councillor Hill today, which I wasn't very happy about. I would like to commend our council officers. I think you've done a wonderful job. And our council officers prior to the present ones here tonight, we've always done a really wonderful job on our libraries. And I am too sorry that you've had to put a lot of time and effort into this notice of motion when you are working very hard on making sure that we are going forward with our library services. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Any other councillor Gilligan?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The report goes to 202040. 2040, we are in 2021, so I don't quite know how the report is outdated. The report talks to the decision that has been made for Williams Landing over Truganina. We have talked about the lack of finite funds that this council has. My mum always taught me that when I went into the supermarket with a dollar and I wanted a dollar fifty worth of lollies, that I couldn't get a dollar fifty worth of lollies. I highly doubt we will be able to deliver both a library in Truganina and the community centre, because everybody seems to have forgotten about that component in the Harrison Ward. It is a community centre and a library that is under threat and is likely to be canned if we are going down the line of a Truganina library. And I say that because why else would you commission a report?
Point of order, there is no, Madam Mayor, there is no Truganina or Williams Landing library being mentioned in the original motion.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Statements that are will or likely to mislead or deceive a person. The notice of motion 607 is called Truganina Library.
Councillors, if you recall, councillor Hill did ask that that be amended, that it was an error at the beginning of the-
She argued to strengthen it, which further reinforces the point, Madam Mayor, that Williams Landing Community Centre and Library is under threat if this passes tonight. And the people of Williams Landing, I hope, are watching this tonight because we will not get a Truganina library and a Williams Landing library and community centre.
Councillor Gilligan, sorry. Councillor Hill?
It's actually, point of order statement will likely mislead people because we don't know the report, we don't know the result of the report. We didn't say we actually would not want Williams Landing. I loved Williams Landing to have a library. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I agree with councillor Hill, councillor Gilligan.
I'm not sure how. I'm happy to talk in the financial contexts again about lollies and having enough money to actually pay for things. And I don't want to be on a council that goes bankrupt because everybody's got a novelty project that they want to fund. We have a finite amount of resources. We have a responsibility to manage the financial administration of this council. You cannot come up with gimmick ideas that are contrary to an existing strategy that does not see trade-offs. Okay, this is the reality. We are not funding an aquatic centre in Point Cook and in Tarnit. We all know that. One will have to be funded because the other one will not have funding. This is exactly the suburbs versus suburbs argument that I put on the financial management report tonight. And if we are going down the line of providing promises that we are going to deliver a Truganina library, which is what this motion actually does say, if you look at the heading, and that we're also going to deliver on behalf of the Williams Landing people, which will be denied, something that has already been endorsed by a previous term of council, then I have every right, as an elected representative, to raise my very serious concerns about the people of Williams Landing being doddled over a proposal to put a library in Truganina when a report that was fundamentally premised on the idea that the library and community centre in Williams Landing would service both, you would therefore, on basic logic, not go, well, why would we have two for the same purpose? It really is as simple as that. It is not the case that it is misleading. It is in the report. And I would encourage, as councillor Hill mentioned earlier this evening, do your due diligence, read your reports. It's not for me to tell you these things. It is absolutely for us to be making conscious decisions that respect ratepayers rather than promising them a lemon and putting us on the verge of bankruptcy because that is what this will do.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should discuss this item? I think councillor Mufford, did you have your hand up before? Sorry. Councillor Zakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I find it astonishing that the best comparison that can be made when discussing our decision-making around a $300 million budget is a dollar or a dollar fifty worth of lollies? It is outrageous that that would be used as an analogy. There are so many more examples that could be used. I just find it absolutely astonishing. This motion, again, there seems to be this constant drawing back to Williams Landing. It doesn't mention Williams Landing. I want to echo the sentiments that were shared by councillor Barrera. We are a learning city. There seems to be so much focus and emphasis placed on schools, and schools are very, very important. And I agree with that strategy. I agree with trying to get more schools for this area. But there's more to learning than formal school education. And the libraries that we have in Wyndham are evidence of that. Lifelong learning is a real thing. Not everybody, not everybody who wants to learn something relies on formal education. That's why we have books, that's why we have libraries, that's why we run programmes, for people to learn various things. Now, I want the best information, I want current information, leading to that. Now, I want the best information, I want current information leading to that. The strategies we have in this council are only as valid as current information. When that information becomes outdated, those reports and those strategies need to be changed. They're only as good as the, so a 2040 strategy is only as good as the assumptions based at the time that the report was made. 2040 will never be exactly what the assumptions presume that they would be. We need current data. Now, if this was produced in 2018, it means that the data that we're relying on is at least three years old. And we all know within three years, there has been substantial change in this community. We need an update. That's all this motion calls for. We need an update, we need an update to the current strategy. We need more information that's relevant to decision-making around libraries.
Point of order, that is not what this report says. The words library service and infrastructure-
Councillor Gilligan, point of order.
Well, misleading and deceptive. This report is on library service and infrastructure planning and talks to both those items. So it is the case that we are, that if we vote for this, are directing for a report around where the infrastructure is located and the types of services that are delivered. So it is certainly not what you have suggested. Thank you.
Okay, I, sorry, ruling?
My ruling is that I agree with Councillor Gilligan. But Councillor Zakowski, you can continue where you were because I don't think that there was anything-
I'll return to my original point. So every strategy, whether it be about libraries, schools, environment, finances, all the, no, sports, I was very familiar, being on the Sports Portfolio Committee in the last term. All these strategies rely on assumptions.
You're out of time as well, so I'll just finish up. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I'll conclude there, that's fine. If I'm out of time, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think the issue for this project, which is, I do note that the notice of motion does say Truganina Library, even though it has been tried to be expanded. But that's certainly how this debate first started, or this notice of motion first started. And I know it has expanded over time and is now here with us this evening. But the main challenge that we have for a lot of our projects and initiatives is the cost and availability of land. And if we don't have the land, then it becomes a very expensive project. I think it's also worth pointing out that the pandemic has changed the way that the community wants to access library services. And they're the sorts of things we should be thinking around the delivery and accessibility of library services, not only just the infrastructure, which we seem to have got a little caught on here, but certainly around the way that we deliver them. Not everyone wants to attend a physical library. I think we learned that over Covid, where people were still very keen to see our library services continues and we worked really hard to continue to do that. So as I've stated before, and I'm a little bit baffled by this too, to be honest, but the strategy is 2018 to 2040. We are in the year 2021. A lot of our strategies are based out to 2040. The sports one, the community vision one, which we're supposed to be going to listen to and endorsing on Thursday night. It's actually not unusual to do that. And I suppose we just need to be clear about what problem is it we're really trying to fix here? Because as far as I'm concerned, the work has been done as part of the strategy. Council officers said they're going to look at the library and the work that they're already doing, that we do in this space. We do that across a lot of our services without needing a notice of motion to do that. And I think unfortunately, we've got caught up in an unfortunate debate because I think in the end, the community really enjoy our library services. We see a number of visitors to those libraries every year. But eventually, you know, whether you agree with Councillor Gilligan's point of view or not, it does become a trade-off. Everything becomes a trade-off. We will need to make some decisions. And to be fair, Councillor Zakowski did talk about relocation of services, did raise that we might need to look at that and make those decisions. And I think the point we've been trying to make is that we, there is, we don't want to do that. We've already done a lot of work in this space. And this notice of motion started about getting a community or getting a library in Truganina. And that's exactly what the notice of motion title is. And that's really fundamentally what this is actually all about. So, Madam Mayor, I won't be supporting the notice of motion tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. Any other councillors we should speak on this item? Councillor Hill, as they've been speakers against the motion, would you like to close the debate? You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for all the councillors who go against or for this motion and show their concerns and their interest in libraries. Thank you so much. And for councillors who are very concerned about the finances as part of this motion, I just want to say that I absolutely have my ultimate confidence in our offices and the finances is in their hands and I know how to allocate this. And this motion is not asking to make any decision. But I do want to start out with two things, two conversations that recently had with our community members. So we're here to serve our community and represent our community and so do all of us here and the councillors sitting in the chamber.
Madam Mayor, point of order. Right of reply is introducing new material not covered in the debate. I'd have to agree with that, Councillor Hill.
Yeah, so the two conversation I had is actually, so one community, so one community members told me the-
Councillor Hill, sorry. You're introducing new material into the debate, so you can't discuss what you're talking about at the moment.
Oh, okay, yeah. So I was with the officers this afternoon talking about the awkward population growth in our municipality.
You're introducing, again. Again, thank you.
No, I actually think, Councillor Hill, you cannot introduce new material not covered in the actual debate.
You need to cover off on something that's already been said.
It's not a new material, I have not even finished my sentence. I would like to ask councillors, Shaw, to be-
Councillor Hill, what she is saying is that we've had a discussion on this topic for a substantial period of time. What you are talking about now is something that hasn't been already covered off and therefore you're introducing new material into the discussion.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Like our Wyndham 2040 vision, a four-year cycle of strategic review is necessary to address the significant deviation from forecasts that have been or have and will be incurred. And councillors Gilligan and a few of you who mentioned about Truganina so many times, I just want to point out that the report, 2018 to the strategy, 2018 to 2040, take just one example, I'm just, because they're so interested in Truganina, I just want to mention that the current population in Truganina in 2021 today is around 38,000, which are already almost reaching the projected population in 2036.
Councillor Hill, Councillor Gilligan, thank you. Councillor Hill, you are introducing your material and your time is up. So just quickly close off-
The motion is valid.
Procedural motion, I put it to a vote.
Thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Do you have a second for that? Councillor Shaw? Councillors, I now put substantive motion to a vote. All those in favour? We're voting on the, on the, on the, on the notice of motion.
We're voting to put the motion.
No, we're putting the motion. We're putting, the substantive motion is put and the substantive motion is Councillor Hill's motion, that the council receiver reported so forth.
I'm putting it to a vote, okay then.
Yep. Councillors, I put the substantive motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Thank you, Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillors, item seven point-
Division.
You would like to call a division on the previous item?
It's important to know who's walking away from Williams Landing, so let's do it. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Councillor Gilligan is making abusive comments. You have just made a comment after the mayor had called for division. The comment you made is, I want to see what councillors are walking away from Williams Landing, is what you have just made, which I don't, I would say that's a point of order and it's abusive. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Councillor Gilligan, I uphold her point of order. Do you-
I'm happy to withdraw it.
Can you please withdraw it? Thank you, Councillor, thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Did you want a division?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Councillor. There was a division called for item 7.1. Councillors, all those in favour? Councillor Mufford, Councillor McIntyre, Councillor Hill, Councillor Amesh, Councillor Zakowski, Councillor Maynard, Councillor Barrera. All those against? Councillor Gilligan, Councillor Hegeditch, Councillor Shaw and Councillor Marcus. Thank you, councillors on that one there. 7.2, notice of motion 608 State Managed Roads. The report's on pages 159 to 160 with the recommendation on page 160. Councillor Shaw, this is your motion, I believe? And tabled as read?
Tabled as read.
Thank you. Do you have a second to this motion? Councillor Marcus, thank you. Councillor Shaw is the mover. Would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm raising this notice of motion tonight as I'm concerned that the state does not have a clear plan for the upgrade of the declared road network across our city beyond the Western Road Upgrade investment. While this investment has delivered a number of very welcome and necessary projects, there is more required to address the multitude of issues that we still have across our city, including congested intersections, unsealed shoulders and lack of safe crossing points for pedestrians and cyclists. Without upgrades and a clear plan for the future of these issues, these issues will only continue to worsen and are getting worse. Vic Roads, now known as the Department of Transport, is the coordinating road authority for freeways and declared arterial roads and in essence is responsible for all components and facilities associated with the through carriageway on these roads. Council is both the coordinating authority and responsible road authority for all municipal roads. Council is the responsible road authority for those parts of declared arterial roads not used by through traffic unless there is a specific agreement between council and Vic Roads, otherwise known as the Department of Transport. These are legal definitions while assigning clear responsibilities between council and the Department of Transport. They often cause great confusion and frustration to the community and to myself, I might add. This confusion is further compounded in Wyndham given that the state government has entered into a public-private partnership with Netflow to build new road infrastructure as part of the Westerns Road Upgrade and also manage all state arterial roads in Wyndham for 20 years from December 2017. I know that these road upgrades have been very welcome. However, there is much more required across our city. Whereas in the past, there was a conversation between Vic Roads and council, there are now a multitude of state government players to engage with. The traditional Vic Roads role is now split between the Department of Transport Region, Major Road Projects Victoria, Department of Transport Central and Netflow. Today, Netflow and Major Roads Projects Victoria have been focused on their new build, for example, the Duncan's Road Interchange Bridge. Now that most of the Western Road Upgrade projects in Wyndham are nearing completion, they are shifting greater focus onto maintenance and ongoing asset management and upgrades. It is therefore timely to ask Department of Transport to review the state arterial road network in Wyndham to ensure it is meeting current and future needs. In my opinion, it isn't, and I'm sure many others would agree tonight. Duncan's Road, Beland Road, Point Cook Road, Heath Road, just to name a few. Before I finish, I'd like to provide an example. In late October 2019, I met with a member of Jacinda Allan's staff to discuss a number of issues council had been raising in relation to this new PPP and a documented summary of state road maintenance issues was discussed and presented at this meeting. Duncan's Road was on that list about shoulder maintenance, potholes, pavement failures and shoulder grading. Just recently, a part of Duncan's Road from Sinnet Street to Edwards Road was recently resurfaced, thank you. However, the sealing of the shoulders was not in the current contract and therefore not completed. This road takes at least 11,000 vehicle movements per day and probably more now with the new interchange and it still looks like a country road. How ridiculous to seal the road, including the previously unsealed bus stops, but not the shoulders. Cost-cutting at its finest and at our community's expense. And finally, I'll mention again in this chamber, the Duncan's Road Edwards Road intersection, which continues to be a dangerous and shocking intersection, one that was not scoped into the interchange works and has no clear plan and we have no clear plan to work and for the Department of Transport to work with council to fix. And quite frankly, I'm sick of it. It's frustrating for me and it's frustrating for our residents. And it's not the only intersection I'm talking about. It's not the only road I'm talking about. We can't even get a keep clear at that intersection and they haven't even finished the line marking on Duncan's Road for the work that they recently did. And it just isn't the roads. The review should also include non-motorised, non-motorised transport needs such as walking and cycling. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. Any councillors wish to speak on this item? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you, I won't, I just want to add to what Councillor Shaw has said. We certainly, in the interim ward, seem to be getting all the complaints. But I think the other one that's come through loud and clear is certainly the College Road Duncan's Road intersection. And there's so many near misses on that. And we have asked if council officers would follow up on that. Since the closure of the crossings, our congestion in this city has become acute and we need to look into what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Marcus. Any other councillors who should speak on this item? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree that now is an ideal time for this audit as well. Many of our roads, especially including the median strips and verges on both sides of the ride are on an acceptable standard. People want their areas to look good as well as the roads being maintained to a safe standard. In our area, the landscaping of some of the new roads is especially poor. I hope that this notice of motion helps strengthen our case and gets a more appropriate and consistent level of maintenance. We should also be aware that residents will expect all council roads to maintain on a consistent and good level of maintenance too. It isn't just about state government roads. Our residents want all to be of a good, consistent standard. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak on this item? Councillor Zakowski?
I will be supporting this motion, notice of motion tonight. But I think it's really important, it is contained within the agenda, I believe, that's available to the public around officers' comments, that when we throw the dice on getting a report back from state government, it may, I say may, may result in us actually being handed responsibility for a great many more roads than we currently are responsible for. So that is a risk to passing this motion. Notwithstanding, I will be supporting it, I'm willing to throw the dice. But I just don't want anyone in this chamber to come back, when the report comes back, whinging and complaining that the state government has lumped us with a great many more roads than we currently are responsible for. So it is a risk, I want it to be noted. But I still will be supporting it because substantially, I agree with it. But it can't be moved or passed without noting the risk that's involved.
Thank you, Councillor Zakowski. Any other councillors wish to speak? I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item eight is council seal, there are nil items. Item nine is questions with notice from the Public Gallery. Madam Acting CEO, are there any question, public questions this evening?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item 10 is urgent business and there is nil. And item 11 is confidential business. Councillors, can I have a mover to close the meeting to the public in order for council to consider confidential business? Councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the pursuit to section 66.1 and section 2 of the Local Government Act 2020.
Let this meeting be closed.
Let this meeting be closed, the members of the public in order for council to discuss confidential matters. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Maynard. Do I have a second, Councillor Zakowski? Thank you, councillors. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. I now close the meeting to the public. Thank you. Thank you councillors. Item twelve of the agenda is close of meeting and I declare the meeting closed at nine fifty-one PM. Thank you councillors and officers and staff.